All right, everybody. So good evening. This is a virtual meeting of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission. And this evening, our seated alternate will be Victoria Goss. And in addition, we have three postponements, items six, nine, and 11. Item six is MCJB LLC and Thomas and Virginia Daily for at forty-four and fifty Cutler Road for a final subdivision. Number nine is to Crown Lane for a final site plan and special permit for a single-family residence in excess of one hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet. And number 11 is Monica Tetet Monsi and Michael Minich for a final site plan and special permit at nineteen Brookridge Drive, also for a dwelling in excess of one hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet. And with that, we will begin. Victoria Goss will be seated, although this is a non-voting item, but the discussion items are non-voted voting. We will begin with three discussion items. And the first one is Bailey Wick Club for a pre-application review to install lights on three platform tennis courts at twelve Dunkin' Drive. Madam Clauberg.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. My name is Melissa Clauberg. I'm with Ivy Barnum and O'Meara. We represent the applicant Bailey Club, Baileywood Club. It's a private club located in the Glenville area of town. Baileywick is a smaller club, generally drawing membership from the neighboring areas, and has a small clubhouse, tennis courts, a pool, and three platform tennis courts. The club was formed fifty years ago by Peter Malkin and Bruce Warwick, with the goal to be an inclusive club with no membership restrictions. Today, there are approximately two hundred and forty-five families as members, mostly from the surrounding neighborhood. The club is considered a seasonal club with tennis and swimming in the summer. However, with the increase in popularity of platform tennis, the club has become busy most of the year. The platform tennis season is usually considered opposite to the tennis season, commencing when the tennis courts close in late October and ending late April, when tennis starts back up again. The club has three platform tennis courts for regular use by the members. Due to the recent increase in popularity of the sport, the club made substantial repairs to make all three courts usable and would now like to add lights. Since platform tennis is considered a winter sport, lights become vital as the days become shorter, just like this week, right? Without lights on the three courts, play is limited to daylight hours, making use of the courts in the evenings after work out of the question, and making participation in the active area tennis platform leagues very limited, as most league players on weekday evenings from seven to ten P. M. We requested to extend the hours of play to accommodate the league play and to allow any members who would like to play after work. This application is made in an effort to make the club more user-friendly to the members, enabling them to enjoy outdoor winter activities and allowing them to participate in the league play, while keeping the club on par with other area clubs. Most new members are very interested in platform tennis play, making the need for lights more immediate. As for a prior application made to the ZB A, there was an application back in twenty-ten to extend the summer hours of the club. I'm advised by the then-president of the club that the application was not successful due to the concern of some neighbors of the additional noise and traffic to the club in the summer. Again, this is an application to extend the winter hours for platform tennis, which accommodates a much smaller group of people than pool and tennis courts. We've also prepared a spreadsheet showing the area clubs where there are platform tennis courts and their hours of use. On the spreadsheet are the clubs that are generally in a neighborhood similar to the Baileywood Club. And you will note that they all have lights and nearly all play until ten P. M. Keep in mind, unlike the use of the club in the summer, when there is tennis and swimming and lots of activity with many members enjoying the club, platform only accommodates a limited number of players, twelve at a time if all courts are being used. And since it is generally cold out during the platform tennis season, there tend not to be many people just hanging around, just the players. Since generally platform tennis is a doubles game, so when and if all courts are in use, there would be about twelve players. So we have also submitted photos to demonstrate the existing screening of the courts from the surrounding neighbors on Angu- Anglis Drive. As the court sits on the property on that northwest side, there is quite a bit of screening, as you will see from the photos, from the few houses on An- Angeles and the cul-de-sac on the terminus of the road. We also have a preliminary lighting study. This study shows very little, if any, spillover of light to the neighbors. This preliminary study was prepared without factoring in the topography of the area. The courts and most of the property owned by the club are in the slight valley. So the final study will take the topography into account and will reflect the fact that there is virtually no spillover of the lighting. So we are open for questions. I'm joined by Rudy Ridberg, who's the architect on the project, Brian Ballenoff, the current president of the club, and Bill Lawford, the treasurer and former president of the club.
Okay, so quickly, quickly, you just hit on a really important topic. It looks like you would only, it looks like there is not much adjoining neighbor impact, but the very first and foremost is it's no spillover whatsoever. And we have, we discussed yesterday at the briefing, I think you were listening, that there was, we had an experience in Lachlan Park near me and some of the other members, that there was significant light intrusion. So the first thing would be to address that. These, this, so I think if you, you've got, looking at your map on Google Earth, all of us, I think have done that. It looks like you could, with screening and with, with appropriate lighting, you could do that. I did also notice that, that those courts seem to be right on the edge of a wetland and are not set back from the wetland. And I was curious about that, that there was no setback, because it's just a very, it looks like it's very few feet in the map, so. Kitty and Patrick, would they need for this improvement of the lights, would they need to get a wetlands permit since they are so close to one?
I don't know. I think we'd have to check with the wetlands agency.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, you'd have to get a green sheet, obviously.
Yes.
At a minimum, so you've.
Well, the green sheet would be, that's what I mean by that, is I think when the moment they get a green sheet, a green sheet, they're going to be, they're literally on the map, it looks like they're fifteen feet away from the wetland. So you're, you're going to have to address that. There are always the concerns about lights that are on late at night, you know, you know, the, that, you know, the issue always when we have non-residential uses in residential neighborhood. It's just a question of having them fit in as best as possible and blend in. So it's just if you address those issues, the light intrusion, and that we would put conditions on you, like never have parties out there at the, you know, there that, you know, could have amplified music and all those things. That's all I've got for you. Anybody else have comments?
I think actually, the. The, the lights they're proposed, do they, are they actually on top of the courts? Or are they from the ground? How are they going to be installed?
I don't know that a final decision's been made on that, but I think there'll be posts like on the edge of the court.
Well, absolutely. What we would tell you is even if, and A R C would, has to review the lighting plan. And, but so absolutely nothing, nothing, no sky, you know, we're really trying to get to dark skies. We're working on the regulations to do that eventually formally. But in the meantime, we're asking that people, we, we do have regulations limiting uplighting, and we long-term would like to be reducing how much uplighting there is. So I think, Nick, we've got, we'll cover that one when it goes to A R C. Anybody else, anything else from anybody?
What was the season again, Scott Coward?
It would be from end of October to April, through April.
Great, thank you.
So if you screen, I had a little bit of a concern about how late the hours are. If you are, so if you're very careful about intrusion of the light and of sound and of traffic, then you should be fine, but you just have to be very conscientious of that. Because it is late, it is late.
We, we've actually met with the members and that are, or the neighbors, and they seem to be okay with everything, so.
Fantastic. That's what we love.
Curious.
Yes, Peter Levy.
Yes, I'm just curious.
Uh-oh. Peter Levy.
Do you want the hours to be? Yes?
Yeah, we, we close down at ten o'clock.
It's at ten o'clock, Peter, and that's the issue. It just seems late if you're out in your backyard, but again, they're screened, they don't. Peter, you have a very bad connection. We can't really hear you. I think, Peter, you might want to go out and come in again. We can't make you out at all. Peter, okay, hopefully he will come back. So I think that's it.
I would do want to clarify one thing, that the, Nick asked me the day, the timing, the October first to the end of March. I don't know that I said that correctly.
I think you said, you said, I think you said to the beginning of April, close enough. And that's how I remembered it anyway. Okay. So that's the thing, if you're talking to the neighbors, all the better. You have to meet the light regulations. Peter, we can't, we can't make you out. You're breaking out. Okay, so that's it, and we hope to see you soon. Yes, that's Rudy, so let me let him in.
Can you hear me there?
Yes, we can, Mr. Architect.
Hi, how's everybody this evening?
Good, Mr. Ridberg. What can we do for you?
So I just really wanted to comment on the, the lighting. I think what we've seen lately in lighting that is going on for the skating clubs and for specifically these tennis courts and paddle courts, the lighting has changed so dramatically over the last five to ten years. Riley, who was the tennis company here that has, is working on a, a lighting drawing and photometrics to look at.
Good.
And it, they are pole-mounted above the surface, but they basically shine down. So there's very little uplight, and it should be great.
Mr. Ridberg, take a look at, if you don't mind, and you're ever in Cos Cob, which I think you sometimes are, take a look at the paddle courts in Lachlan. Those are a fail.
Okay.
And we finally got Parks and Rec to shield them, the neighbors. Your, your P and Z member, of course, didn't get involved, but the neighbors got involved and got them to shield those lights. But even then, they're not, they've been a problem. And, and, and Parks and Rec leaves them on fairly late at night, and it's an issue in the neighborhood. So I'm very sensitive to it right now, because I walk in that neighborhood and people still are making comments about them that live down Lachlan.
Okay, happy to take a look at them and I'm.
Great. I always send you to do research. I'm sorry, but they'd always help, right?
I'm always in Cos Cob as well. So I take a look at that. And, and I know that the Burning Tree just got theirs approved. I'm going to try to find out their fourth court, and I'm going to try to find what lights they're using as well.
And Burning Tree, I think, also has the advantage of being pretty isolated, pretty tree-shrouded. And you've got, of course, with a founding member who's so committed to trees and screening, I'm sure you'll be able to enhance the screening so it doesn't intrude in the neighborhood.
When I first went to the site, and as I said, I did work on this club about twenty years ago with the building. The, the, those paddle courts have been there since forever, and I think at that time, you know, fifty years ago, we weren't, they weren't as cognizant of wetlands.
I know that.
They're not approaching anymore, and the lights will be on the surface of the building. There'll be a green sheet needed, but we will bring that in front of wetlands and get their sign off.
What you're going to get, I'm just telling you now, what you're going, and the reason I raised the wetland is you may get a comment from conservation about the lights and the impact on the, on the local wildlife, et cetera. So that's, so that's just something to consider, but if your lights are very focused, you should be good. Do I have any other public comment? Now that we brought in Mr. Ridberg. No, okay, so we'll send you on your way. Thank you very much, and thank you for being so efficient and prompt.
No problem.
Our next, our next application is also a discussion item for a pre-application review at eighty-four South Water Street. This is a demolition of the existing building and construction of a mini self-storage facility. And representing, and Mr. Wallace is the applicant?
That is Mr. Burrell.
Hello, Mr. Burrell. I didn't think your name was while, I remember seeing it on the application. I was confused. Hello, so we've all read it, but if you want to give us a summary of your plans, and of course, you've got lots of coverage in the press as well.
Yes, lucky us. So my partner and I bought this property in twenty-eighteen. We have spent a considerable amount of time and money cleaning up, which was an environmentally challenged site. We're towards the end of this, and we have looked at a variety of ways of developing this. We've had conversations with Katie DeLuca quite often, and we're, we're trying to find one that is low-impact. It will be valuable to the community and can integrate into a waterfront area where we can contribute to that place. And we've looked at a variety of things. There's been suggestions for commercial operations, rent and retail. And we have fixed on a mini self-storage facility. It is something that typically has very, very low parking requirements and low traffic. If you go to Stanford, Connecticut, it's, I believe it's one car for every five thousand square feet of parking requirements. So it is, has very, very low income, low impact from the perspective. It has low need for schools and elderly support. And if you actually look at, on a nationwide basis, Greenwich is way underserved for self-storage in its community versus the national average. We have put some renderings in. It looks like some New England condos. That's just our integrated, you know, our first idea. We have also thought about trying to save the front wall, which we think is quite beautiful, but it has some physical challenges. And we have, have done some work. We've got a lot of work to go, and, and we wanted to put this before the committee to get some feedback and see where we are.
I think you've got some passion on the commission about the topic, so I'm going to let them go first.
Please.
Mr. Burrell, how does this fit into the WB zone as we have it in our regulations? As a, as a specific water use?
We, we are, we are planning, and, and Mr. Burley is, is, I think he's on. If he's not on, he's certainly watching, and I'll try to answer the questions as best as possible. We think that there is a hybrid use, is that there will be some space in the, in the front near the water, where we hope it connects with the, the waterfront. A walkway that goes from, from basically all the way down the river from, from the bridge. We would expect that we could do as much as we possibly could in terms of adding docks or boat storage that would be available. It all depends on the Army Corps of Engineers. They're quite precious about what can be done relative to, to the river. And we also think there is space there that can be made for folks who want to do stand-up paddleboarding, canoeing, and fishing.
So that's the connection to the water, but how does the use of a storage facility fit into the uses that are provided for in the WB zone?
There, there will.
Water recreation, water-dependent, water-related, that kind of thing?
We do expect that a portion of the storage will be for boats, which is water-dependent. And we also think there will be some that will be related to waterfront activity. A good portion will not. It'll be used by, by non-waterfront activity.
Okay, kind of an interesting thought. I think one of the things that I'm having issue with is that the connection to the water for the use, yes, if it does have boat storage or something, may, may work, but it would seem to me that actually it's kind of, it's kind of a mixed use of things. And I think actually, it's, it's kind of defining in the pre-app here of what you're actually want to do specifically, because I'm seeing kind of a pre-app things here and there, but I'm not too sure all of what's happening inside. If you have voice storage inside, how do the boats go in and out into the water out of your site? Those kind of things. I think it's kind of understanding if you actually have some kind of boat storage there, that's intended. How does that work? And I think it's something for you to address when you come back.
Okay, I think it'll be seasonal, and we have also talked about with, with amongst ourselves, and we haven't, haven't finished that yet, but figure out other ways where we could use some of the space that's associated with the building and use it to draw people to the water. And that might be rooftop space where we, we have the ability for people to go and do yoga or exercise. We haven't figured that out. It depends whether it works physically, but we are open to figure out how we can create something that would integrate with the community, would not have a lot of impact, and would enable people to better use the waterfront than it is today.
And one of the things that we, we look for, and it's encouraged by state and federal law, is public access of some kind on the waterside. I'm sure that Ms. DeLuca has mentioned this to you.
She's, she has not been shy about that, and we understand that.
Think so, because she and I have always been committed to trying to get more of that.
Candidly, we'd love to be able to, based on economics, develop something that enables us to promote this, which I think is needed in Greenwich, candidly. The average self-storage facility is within three miles of a population, and, and there really isn't any of that in Greenwich. So this is something that needs done. And if we can get some flexibility on some of the things, we would put some amenities there, which we think would, to your point, draw people to the water, better use it, get them access to it, and do something would be an amenity for the town.
And what about some kind of cafe or restaurant facility?
You know, I, I haven't thought about that. Candidly, that requires a ton of parking, will drive a lot of activity. And I've seen that, we have seen a number of restaurants and other, other facilities on that road fail. Candidly, there's one, I think, two that just turned over in the last twelve months.
Yes.
So we have looked at that. We've looked at it extensively. I just don't, you know, if you want to give me the ability to put a Starbucks there, I'm happy to, but I'm sure that won't happen, but.
But do you think it's because of location? Do you think it's access issues?
It is, I, I'm not a restaurateur, but all I can say is prima facie, you've had two restaurants fail within a quarter mile of this, on the Greenwich side, in the last, you know, twelve months. So, you know, I, I don't know. We can look into that and come back with some, some thoughts.
What about the idea of having like a small storefront with, like for packaging materials, boxes, whatever, something related to storage that would be manned by the person who's going to be there anyway, presumably? Just so that there is, is some sort of street relationship, if you will.
We, we would, we would imagine that you would drive into this place, and there would be an office there. Are you implying that we could sell other things, that it could be amenity for the, the community?
Well, I'm thinking something like, but I was thinking that, that should be upfront, though, so that, so that as things start developing later on, you know, you're not walking by stores, and then all of a sudden, there's kind of this blank wall. There'd be at least some sort of interaction and relationship there.
That's a great idea. I mean, we, one of the things we really want to do is see if we can figure out, we can save that front building. I don't know if people know the facade. We think it's, it's, it's quite retro and chic, and we would.
Very cool. It's, I've always loved that building.
It's a beautiful building. It's unfortunately, a prior owner didn't treat it as well as it probably should, but hopefully, we could save a piece of that and have something that would be historical for the, for the town.
Only a piece. It can't be saved, right? It can't be restored.
You know, if, if, if you had doors, enlarged doors where the current openings are, and save the stuff in the middle, I think it would look great. And I think you could put metal, corrugated metal with that, that, that beautiful cement piece.
Yeah. I always said it would be a great spot for, and Kitty, I don't know if you could do this, because you've got the issue with the flood zone and residences in a flood zone. But that building, it just looks like, like one of those cool rehabs for condominiums. But I'm sure you've explored all those things. But to Katie's point, if you did a retail, a retail type of cafe, you only have to have twelve seats, and it has a lot less parking requirement. If you, anything that gives you, you know, our categories in the regulations, water-dependent, water-related, and water-enhanced. So anything that turns you to the river and enhances that. I believe the neighbors do have a significant interest in this application. I'm expecting that they will comment now, and you're, if you haven't heard from them already, I think you're going to get some public comment that may be informative for you. The last thing is, of course, you well know that you're in a flood zone as well, and that you're going to have to conform to the FEMA standards when you do the demo rebuild. And even if you were to rehab the building, and that would be a problem on the rehab, because your rehab would be a significant improvement, and I think you'd be, you'd be in a stuck place unless you did a, some sort of historic preservation on the building. But it, it's a possibility, I suppose, but, and Katie knows a lot about that. She's got her, her expert hat on, so, but, you know, you, you are going to have to, if you demo the building, you're going to have to go full FEMA compliance. And what is it? Are you guys, it's AE fourteen or something?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I just.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Part, part of the regulation, as I understand it, addresses the issue of whether this use is peculiar to the water or whether, and whether or not it could easily, easily be placed elsewhere. I wonder if you could just, this is part and parcel of what we've been talking about, but I, I'm struggling a little bit with understanding why a, a storage facility should be placed there as opposed to inland.
I would imagine that if there were space inland for that to be done, it would have been done already, given the economics of it. So I, I think, again, we're trying to, to balance the, the desire to have something that integrates with the water. And as we've mentioned, we're going to have a walkway, which will integrate with that entire piece. It's currently broken up right now. You can't walk from the bridge. This will help that. We've talked about adding space for fishing, for recreation, for boats, et cetera, into that. And we've talked about trying to have some level of storage, albeit seasonal for, for boats. But again, we're trying to balance off that between, between the economics of, of doing something that's, that's, that will be successful and the desire to have something that integrates into the water place.
I think you, what kind of went back to, it's, you know, you have a connection to the water, but I think as Mr. Lowe was talking about, it's the actual use of storage. If you were exclusively marine storage and provided marine storage that it had access to the water at the property, that would start to make sense. But I'm not seeing how this use as a self-storage location fits into the six-one-zero-seven WB zone.
I mean, look, I, I, we've looked at a variety of different ways of developing and changing this, what is a bit of an eyesore. We've spent significant sums to improve it from an environmental perspective, and we're trying to thread the needle between the desire to have something that's, that would, would work on the waterfront and be, be viable, that wouldn't have too much impact and would work in a flood zone. And that is a very hard needle to thread, and so we've tried to do something that marries some of the things that you want to achieve in terms of access to the water, recreational use of the water, adding amenities that, that will quite frankly improve the entire place and have something that is not going to drive a lot of traffic, noise, and, and needs to this part of town.
And yeah, and you, you will be affected, no matter what you do there, you're going to be affected by that development in Portchester, those two developments that are coming in Portchester, and, and the neighborhood's very conscious. Go ahead, Mr. Burley.
Yes, it, it, just, just to, to note that since nineteen oh-three, it has been, it has been a warehouse. The use has been warehouse storage, so it's, it's, it's actually not a change of use.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, because I thought, Mr. Burley, that it was originally light industrial.
Yeah, we.
I have, I thought I had once read a history of it, but you, you, you've done more research. I'm going to believe you, but I thought it had been used way back when for, for light industrial, but maybe that was never how it was approved.
Yeah, it's a storage, a storage warehouse.
When I was growing up, they made electrical components and lighting there. It was a factory.
You're, you're absolutely correct, and, and in the front of the building was a lot of the manufacturing and maintenance. In the back of the building was assembly, but also a ton of storage. They, they brought, they brought components from all over the world, and I can show you pictures from, from the newspaper around the turn of the century, where when, when they were doing some things, they had to bring pig iron into that facility. They were, they used to blow up the, the Byram River when it was frozen over, so they could bring pig iron in to service that facility.
You know what? When you guys come in for your application, all of those little pieces of history you found, if you want to just toss them into the back of your narrative, we love to read that stuff. We don't have to talk about it at the meeting.
So much fun, yeah.
It's so much fun. We love to read about, there's, somebody sent us a bunch of cool stuff in this, for this meeting, and we all got such a kick out of it. I think you're going to get, get, go ahead.
It's sort of a deep property also, so as if you keep the facade, which is, which is a beautiful facade, and do the things that you were talking about, but then obviously you create a new structure in the back. But since it's so deep, I wonder if you could even just do like one layer along the side of the building of kayak storage or something along those lines, you know, just, just, even if it's.
You know, you could do some, so you're headed, you, you, we're giving you the ideas. You know that our priority, we'd love to. You know that our priority, we'd love to see you do water. We'd love to see you do the public access. We'd love to see you throw in something that is other than cement colored and cement, you know, some, some trees and whatever. So it could be a very, if you could restore that facade, it, you know, it could be very cool and it could be a real boost. But again, you know, keep talking to Katie as you go. I'm gonna, if you're okay with that, is the commission kind of done so we can go quick to public comment?
I think actually, when you come back.
Sure.
Okay.
I'd like to see the COs for the uses that are inside from, you said, 1907. And a real good brief on how the intended use meets the 107 regulation for WB.
Yep. So I'll turn it to public comment. Could those of you who wish to speak, please raise your virtual hand. There's Al Shahadi. Anybody else? Alex Pope, I'm assuming you want to speak or if you would raise your virtual hand, I just want to get a sense of how many people want to speak. Only Al Shahadi wants to speak? Okay, all right, Mr. Shahadi. There he comes. Hopefully, there you go. All right, you should be ready to go. Go ahead.
Okay, didn't realize you were going to let me join as a panelist. I would have worn a better sweater. Good evening, everybody. My name is Al Shahadi. I am a longtime resident of Byram. I've appeared before this commission before a couple of different occasions. I am officially the chair of the Byram Land Use Committee as as well as a longtime resident. The BNA submitted comments, formal written comments yesterday to Katie and Patrick. And my remarks tonight are on behalf of the BNA.
Great, thank you.
I'm fascinated by the history and would love to find out more. I actually had an impression that it was a millwork building prior to being the Haskell plant. But there was definitely industrial use there and there may have been storage. I can't speak definitively about that. It was secondary to a a manufacturer, a light industrial use that was dependent on water delivery. That's hence its location. I am pretty familiar with the building. I'm obviously familiar with the outside. I've been inside a couple of times. I actually toured the building about 15 years ago with a former owner, trying to help the owner figure out if the building would qualify for historic tax credits as a possible financing vehicle. And then 2008 happens. So that didn't go anywhere, but I actually have seen the inside and I do love the outside as well as, you know, just the funky nature of it. Couple of questions that I had on the application that are small board. There was a reference in the diagrams to a four-story building with about 500 units and about 61,000 square feet. I don't know if that was attaching an incorrect cut sheet from another development. But I I did walk away scratching my head, wondering how many stories this building, how big is it? How many units are there going to be, et cetera? Those minor details are really secondary to the overall proposal. The self-storage facility is not something that the BNA wants to buy. Give you a big picture of Byram, I think everybody here is somewhat familiar with Byram. We are blessed with a historic walkable downtown area. It has a modest critical mass. It needs to grow to be a more vibrant community. It has suffered from benign neglect in the past and there is no one individual department that's involved. But there is enormous potential there. The BNA is actively encouraging development of underdeveloped sites, reuses of existing sites that build on our strengths, that preserve history, that expand our walkable downtown, that provide public access to the waterfront, which has been the primary conversation here, and generally add vibrancy to the area. I I would like to reiterate a comment that Katie made during the presentation. I've done a lot of real estate development. I've done a lot of finance. I know a fair amount about sort of, you know, the new urbanism world of things. There are a lot of studies that talk about foot-length facades with no interaction to the street kill street life. People just walk past and I've actually seen some very interesting studies that people speed up when they're walking past. We want uses that will slow people down, will get people to interact with the street, interact with the building. I understand there are some real Rubik's Cube type limitations on development that the waterfront business has put in there. And, you know, maybe there are some creative solutions to this. I don't know. I can't say I've thought creatively about it prior to this. So, you know, basically, the feeling from the BNA is we would much rather see something that, if there is storage, storage is decidedly a secondary issue and vibrancy, street connection, connecting there are now a fair amount of residential building being built on the other side of it. And I, my heart goes out to Mr. Wallace and Mr. Baril for coming to the neighborhood right after the door was closed on residential. But those residents have a choice. They can get into their car and they can drive somewhere or they can go down the street and they can walk to restaurants, to other activities, the kind of things we want to build out. And having a large facility that has no street life, no interaction with the street is not going to help that. And just to comment on the failure of restaurants, we felt that very much, but I think that's very much COVID-dependent. That there is a history of restaurants in Byram. And we're actually expecting some benefits from all of the development in Portchester, where there's a number of longtime businesses that are being kicked out rather unceremoniously. And, you know, I'm not in, I'm not a property owner, et cetera, but we would love to see some of those properties, some of those businesses come to Byram and find a place to bring their business. So that's going a little farther than just comments here. But the BNA would love to continue our conversation with Mr. Mr. Wallace and Mr. Baril, but about something else other than self-storage.
Great, thank you, Mr. Shahadi. Thank you very much. So I, as I remember, one of the restaurants that closed, closed pre-COVID, but yes, that's a good point. And I think, okay, the new one is Rosina's, is that right? Anybody remember? I've eaten there, can't remember.
Pretty good.
Yeah, okay. Yep, okay, so, and that one's doing well, but but you guys are right, the coffee place right across the way did close. But that was because there was absolutely zero parking. I tried to go, every time I tried to go there, it's like, forget it. Okay, so we'll send you on your way. It sounds like you're, you've got things to think about, things to work on. Katie and I talked a little bit yesterday about whether you could do a historic overlay, whether you could, if it was a historic designated building, whether you could restore it and keep it and and how you could work around the FEMA regulations. And so she can fill you in on that. And I think with that, we'll just send you and look to hear from you again.
Madam Chairman, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all for your time.
Bye bye.
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 So for our next discussion item, it's, the third one is Michael Newman for a pre-application review. And it is to rezone properties at 190, 20240 Lake Avenue from the RA2 to the R12 zone. And Mr. Newman, thank you very much. Your narrative was very interesting. As as mentioned, we all enjoyed reading some of the history and color you provided.
Yes, thank you and thank you for the kind words on yesterday's briefing call. As an introduction, I'm Michael Newman. I've been, I'm at 200 Lake Avenue. And I've been a Greenwich resident for almost five years. I had the good fortune to marry my wife Katie, who actually grew up here. And we feel we've got strong roots to the community and are really blessed to be raising our kids here. So, as you know, I don't want to go into all the details of that lengthy narrative. But in short, there's, you know, four homes here, two of which happen to be connected and share an interesting party wall. They date back to the 1800s. And for many years of the first half of the 20th century, they were used by what is now Carmel Academy before that Rosemary Hall. The houses across the street on Lake Avenue, some of those were also faculty homes. And they were sort of caught up in a large zoning in 1957 that took large swaths of property and moved in into RA2, which was generally nowadays interpreted to slow down the post-war development. Into that, at the time, there was no FAR in the zone. So I think there was no reason to contest anything. The homes were only about 70 years old, as opposed to today, they're about 130 years old. And in 2003, when they added the setbacks, I think that created hardship. And as the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm sure is aware, there was almost a decade of litigation from throughout the community about hardships that may or may not have created. Anyways, I look forward to hearing your questions and finding out what further information you guys would like to see how I might be able to move the application forward.
Commission comments?
I think actually, when, if you, if you do come back, I think actually that a full rezoning application, your narrative was informative. And I think I see a little bit more about that. About the single home with the party wall, that actually was kind of intriguing to understand how that works and why that works.
Well, I I mean, I can quickly, and I can detail it more. That's actually the home I live in. It was, I, from some maps I've seen from insurance companies that date back to the 1900s. It looked like they might have been two separate houses prior to 1910. And then somewhere in the next 10 years, they were combined into one house. And they actually had two headmistresses at the school for a period of almost 30 years, that one lived in each side of the house. The backyard was sort of a shared backyard and gardens to the Rosemary Hall School. And on both headmasters retired at the same time. One died maybe about five years after retirement and the other seven years later. On the death of the second headmaster, headmistress, who was the original sort of founder of the school, if you will, her, I guess, descendants legally separated the home despite it having been lived in and originally built as two separate homes. I can sort of glue together on paper and help you guys see where they actually join on the property. If that's helpful or like show how the field cards abut, if you will.
That's not necessary. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else in the commission have comments? I'll just say quickly that, yeah. I know you've got neighbor comments. I believe it's on both sides of the issue. When we talked about it yesterday, what we saw is that you definitely have undersized lots here that it would make sense for them to go with the next zone over. I, in red, looking at the next zone over, it seemed to me it could have easily been R20 and that that would have been a better fit, but that's water under the bridge. So to me, just on the basis of numbers, you're not spot zoning. And it seems to be consistent that you're, the size of those lots is is relatively more consistent. I'm gonna, if it's okay with everybody, I'm going to turn real quickly to a couple of public comment. Is that okay with you, Mr. Newman?
Can I speak to one more?
Yeah.
Issue you just raised in terms of the R12 decision to propose R12 is the zoning. I spent time with the 6205 sheet, certainly, and looked at all the properties, including their surveys, talked to the owners, some of the owners, and.
So you're ready to, you're ready to join the Planning and Zoning Commission because we all sleep with that, we sleep with that under our pillow.
I actually, it's pretty obvious right, right off the bat that like an RA1 doesn't make sense, given none of the properties are technically even an acre, right? When you go down to R20, one of the things that, you know, stands out, just as an example, across the board, the home at 240, which is my neighbor.
Which is very, very small. It's a point two of a of an acre. Yeah, we saw, I mean, you can trust that we've all looked at all your numbers. You can pretty much trust, we looked at the material. I just started out, you know, I start playing with numbers and I was averaging out the lots, never mind the lot that.
Yeah.
The area across the street from you is R12 and it would make the most sense. I see your point.
I, but it was not just size of the lots. It's actually also the setbacks. These properties, when anyone does want to ultimately sort of development, develop them, they'll probably need significant sort of oversight from ZBA anyways, because the existing sort of setbacks are often, you know, less than four or five feet from the edges of the property. Obviously, I've got a attached on one side and on three feet from my neighbor's property line on the other side. So I think there are, that brings up just the point that it's not just about, you know, the acreage or the FAR. It's it's the setbacks, it's the shape. And there will continue to be a lot of sort of restrictions, if you will, no matter what zone they end up in, because they're so unusual.
Yes, that's actually works to your benefit, by the way, as you know. If you read section 69, 69, right, of the regs of what you do with a, with a, with a lot that's non-conforming. Yeah, so it actually works to your advantage, not your disadvantage. I'm going to turn to the public. Christina Larson, if you would go ahead. And the next speaker after that is Jane Liu. And Ms. Larson, if you would go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry, I don't have a camera that's working with this computer, but I hope you can hear me.
That's fine.
Thank you. Mostly, I would like to understand the process a little bit as you go forward with making these decisions. I'm a neighbor and Michael was kind enough to come by and let us know last week that this was in the works. When we bought our home, we bought our home, understanding what the zoning was. We are right on the south side, abutting two of the, the, the joint home, the, the home that shares the wall. And I understand that three properties are being petitioned out of six in a row, but the three properties aren't all abutting. So I I do think there's a little bit of spot zoning question there. So I do want to ask about that, why in a row of six houses that are all contiguous, we're only looking at three and they're not abutting?
So that's. Ma'am, I'm unclear on that because I was, I very carefully mapped them out over the weekend and everything is adjoining that they're proposing be rezoned. So I'm unclear. Could you, Patrick, could you throw up the the rezon, please? That it, there's a little map that shows the pre, pre the rezon and then they have another one that shows the post. But there's one that has in in the material, there's one that has the actual addresses of the, of, it says 190 and it has each of the addresses. That's the one that probably is the most illustrative.
So the most recent one that I saw is 190, 20248, which drops number 240. So there's basically two that are touching each other. And then it drops to 240, 240 and jumps to 248. And I'm just south of 190, 186, and it doesn't include me and it doesn't include the other house that's one just south of us. So that's the one thing that I'm not comfortable with in that regard. And then the other thing that I would like to express is just a concern that the time and the reasoning for the town to do its zoning was to try to constrain overbuilding on lots. And I think that the idea that because Mr. Newman would like to expand his property building just does, it's a special benefit to him to be able to have his home and two others be rezoned in a way that doesn't fit with everybody else and what we expected when we moved in and what we've lived by and adhered to as we've been here. So those are the comments that I like to make.
So just to just answer you quickly on something because it's pertinent to a lot, a plenty, a zoning commission has as its mission to reduce nonconformities. And that would be the argument that this was created, this was zoned RA2. But our job in part is to reduce nonconformities where we can. And they, it would reduce the extent to which all of these lots are nonconforming. Pat, could you please put up that screen, that one page with the numbers? There you go. Okay.
So Madam Chair, I'd just like to clarify. So Mr. Newman, when he was making the application, noted to staff that he wasn't able to get the signatures of all the property owners in the subdivision. And we instructed him to to get the ones that he could. And if you'd like to discuss rezoning the larger area, that's certainly plausible under the pre-application. But that at a future application, you would need to, you know, we would, we would expect that all property owners to be rezoned would be part of the application process.
Okay, could we just look at that map again? Because I just want to cover what is skipped and not skipped.
Let me stop the share and I'll find that map.
And the map I was looking at, it has underneath, it says the address of each one. And the one that I remember seeing as excluded is 186. And the one that I remember seeing as excluded is 186.
Yes, 186 excluded and also 200.
Page 59.
Chair Albin, are you looking for the map I included for the butters list that you could see which homes I'd sort of reached out to?
This is what I'm looking for, what he's sharing right here. All right, so you have 248. And you have 200 and and 100 and and then you have 190 Lake Avenue. And your point then, yep, is that 240, which I very carefully wrote down. This is stupid. I wrote down that we were that 240 was part of the application when I was doing this. Okay, so your point is you, we would not be able to exclude this property right here. That 240 property, we would have to rezone it. Because you're right, that would be spot zoning.
And I.
We can't.
Where's the 240? I can't read the map that well.
Right there. Patrick is putting his finger on it.
Thank you.
So that would be spot zoning to do the top and the bottom ones.
And may I ask one other question, too? I think number 186 was never included and I'm not sure why either. So I think that.
I did look at that over the weekend and as I remember, 186 has already been rebuilt. And is a much larger piece of property.
But as of the.
You could stop.
Do we just?
What you don't want to do is create gap teeth, if you will.
Of course, of course. But if part of it is to make sure that all nonconforming lots are in their way. I think ours is nonconforming, too, which you mentioned would be an issue. So.
Your goal, your goal is to reduce nonconformity where you can. What you don't want to do, and you're exactly right, is do spot zoning. So you have to, you're right. I missed that when I looked at this. I think we all did. 240 has to be rezoned if this happens because you can't have the gap in the teeth. It looks like teeth. You can't have that gap because that is a spot. You're leaving a spot. Nobody's.
Thank you.
That's as far as I know. Katie, Patrick.
Can I speak up?
Um, yes, you may. You are the applicant.
So I did submit only three signatures and three properties at the time of submission. I'd reached out starting several weeks ago about this, after having researched it for quite some time with the help of planning and zoning. I wrote the lengthy narrative proposing all four zones and, sorry, four properties that I think were a part of the campus are on their original foundations. And are sort of extreme nonconformities. You know, according to sort of the RA2 zoning. And what I would say is that I believe there's also statutory language that suggests that you know, the zoning commission can go ahead and include that property that with or without the.
I just said that, sir. That's what I just, I just said.
Great.
Okay, so I said that. And the other thing that could happen. Yes, you could, because it's up to the planning and zoning commission whether or not it rezones. And you could do that, or you could only, or you could just do the top two properties. It's a little trickier because it looks more like spot zoning to me. Katie?
Yeah, you're right. You would, you would have to do a contiguous area, I think, to make it, to make it make most.
So you would, yeah, so, but we have done.
Spot zoning because it is an area you want it, what you know.
With a spot zone, so you could do the two lots that are adjacent. But to do two lots, skip a lot and do a fourth lot would be out of the question because you're, you're leaving that one lot. That Singleton is a widow lot. It's, you know, it's, I think that becomes a spot zone. And we could get a legal, legal opinion on it, but that's my take.
Yeah, I mean, your decision isn't based on each person's individual desires. It's based on what makes most sense for the town.
Exactly. So we, we would do all four. Hold on a second, Mr. McCray. So we would do all four, but we could, I believe, alternately do the top two. So I leave that question if it doesn't sound like you're going to get an agreement from the third lot. So those are two options, but we have the ability. Go ahead, Mr. McCray.
So the third lot is 196?
One is 200.
186. Cause I'm looking, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the zoning map that was supplied and GIS that was supplied. And I see 248, I see 240, I see 190. I see 200, but I don't see the last lot of 1.2 acres at 186.
So we know 186 is.
And it's setback.
And it's also that property, I looked at that this weekend and that's like fairly new construction. It's all done and it's 1.223 acres. So forget that one.
Why would I forget that one? Because you're talking about gap teeth and that would be a gap.
Because it's not a gap tooth because you've got the next three to the north, to the next four to the north would be rezoned. Below that property is another two acre. Do you see what I'm saying?
Just point out, Mr. McCray and Madam Chair, that that the lots to the west of these are also in the RA2 zone. So.
It's not, that's what I just said. That's what I just said.
It's not like it's going to be an island if you left a lot on Lake Ave in or out. But I think as Mr., again, Mr. Newman selected these for a number of reasons for the consideration. If the commission thinks that this area needs to be rezoned in in a greater size, then I think that's something that the commission upon their own power can take. If Mr. Newman is not interested in, you know, trying to rally the troops here.
But in theory, Mr. McCray, 248, 240, 200 and 190 are contiguous. You could just do 248 and 240. You could do all four. It does not matter for our purposes about 186 because it it continues to be adjacent to other larger zoned lots. So it continues.
So is 248. I mean, 248 has got the, is contiguous to the, to the north as well.
Wants the rezoning. That's, so it doesn't matter. That doesn't matter. What I'm saying, hold on a second, Mr. Newman. What I'm saying is to you is you can rezone, what we're trying to do is rezone contiguous stuff. So you could leave out, there's no reason to leave out 248. It's point 75 and of an acre, you could leave it out. You could, but they want to rezone. So you're okay with them. Then you could do another adjacent property or three more. It's as simple as that. We got to put two more people, Ms. Larson. So the next person who wants to speak is Jane Liu. And then Mr. Newman, I'm not forgetting that you want to speak. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Liu should be ready in a second.
She lives at 240?
We're about to find out. Hello, Ms. Liu. Yes, we can. Hello.
So yes, my, my husband and I, Tom and Jane, we live at 240. I know the application in some spots say we are applicant, we're not applicant to this rezoning. Actually, we're against it. We bought this house in 2004. And the Newman's house is next to us. The Newmans are the third owner since we moved in. The two previous owners did not have any issue with the zoning. It feels like the Newmans, they moved in a few years ago and they want to build a bigger house. And then they started to find out what's wrong with the zoning because the current zone does not allow them to build bigger. And then he wants to put all of us in a different zone. But that's when we bought the house, it was with the understanding that the houses on this side of the street, they belong to a more restrictive zone and the you know, there would not be much expansion. That's part of the reason we bought the house. To me, you, if you don't like this zone, you buy your house in another zone. You know, you buy your house here and then you try to move the zone, move the houses to another zone. It's not fair.
Okay, and and what you like is that it restricts that because it's in the RA2, it restricts people's capacity to enlarge their footprint.
Yeah, that's part of the reason we bought this house here. We understood with another zone from across the street was another school district. We understood that and we picked this house and we don't like, after we lived here for 17 years, our zone got changed because neighbor wanted to build a bigger house.
Okay. Okay, um, thank you very much, Ms. Liu. I appreciate your comments very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Newman, you wanted to speak again.
Yeah, I guess I just. I think you guys can observe in the tables, both 248 and 200 are a bit, are a bit smaller. I don't think anyone here, I've tried to speak to all my neighbors. I've been happy to show them some of the things that we'd like to run by the ZBA. In particular, if we didn't get a zoning change, but I think we'll still go before the ZBA either way because of the nonconforming status across many other dimensions. But, um, you know, both, um, you know, we've got a letter from two neighbors and both are, you know, significantly over their FARs. They may have been grandfathered in. I'm technically over my FAR at just over 3200 feet. The house that we are in is technically zoned for about 2,000 square feet. I sit and look out my driveway driveway at our seven houses and our 12 houses that are 5,000 square feet. Literally, you know, I can throw like a lacrosse ball with my neighbors in their driveway. And that's how close we are. I think if you look and drive down the street, you would see that the character, uh, these houses are sort of in communion and neighbors with the houses across the street. I don't think what I was asking for was egregious. And I think we have, you know, two neighbors who it sounds like one wants to be included. The other doesn't want anything to happen. I'd say that in addition to any questions of FAR, there are sort of the extreme nonconformities that to do anything in our house, meaning if we were to knock down our garage, as was originally suggested, build a carport and build on top of it, things like that, they'll all have to go through ZBA. We don't really want to build a carport. We don't think that would be good for the neighborhood. Likewise, though, even as the chair pointed out that because we're nonconforming, we can go down to an RA1. That basically means because our width of our lot is only about 70 feet. We can build in the middle 15 feet of our house. So you walk in the front door, you see a great backyard that was part of the historic Rosemary Hall Gardens. And that's the one place we can enclose space on our property. That's sort of, and even within that, it's very narrow. So my point was to point out that across all the zoning regulations, these four properties are significantly nonconforming. They're extreme outliers with the 1957 properties. It was the historical oversight. And I think it's very reasonable to put them into our 12. I think there will continue to be lots of protections because they're such odd lots, so to speak. That will limit what actual building goes on. And I would also further point out, uh, my neighbor 248, as well as our family at 200, my neighbor at 190, all bought historic homes. We love that they're historic homes. Uh, I think we've been particularly sensitive to our neighbors on the front side. And the, you know, the plans we envision, try and improve and pull back the house, if anything. So I know that's circumstantial and less relevant to the case, but I think sort of the details of the nonconformities should speak for themselves.
Okay.
So one of the things, if you do decide to come back with a rezoning, which might be of interest to the commission, is a history of the request for variances for the properties that you're looking to rezone.
That's a great point, Katie. Thank you.
Mm hmm. And one other thing just to address that was raised. My neighbor Jane mentioned that, um, you know, there's at least been three different property owners since. I can't speak to them all. I actually did look on Zillow last night and saw, I think there have been like five property owners in 20 years. I think one of the things is that, you know, this is an old house. There are, you know, there's one closet in the entire first floor. It needs updating and I think families have had to decide whether to invest in the property and maintain, you know, a great old historic home. Or if, you know, their family grows, you know, they move on and move out. I know that is, you know, particularly the case of the prior owner.
Okay, so, uh.
And and I would also just add one last thing is I submitted a petition with quite a few signatures. You know, specifically, I think it's 12 neighbors. It doesn't have the institutional property owners of Carmel and Lake Avenue. I've, you know, been trying to run this up the, you know, poll at Carmel. I think they're finally looking at it today. The field club basically, you know, walked through the issues and, you know, was told, you know, you know, we generally don't involve ourselves in that stuff because some of the neighbors may be members and some others may not. And generally think they're going to avoid, but you'll see, you know, we've got 12 signatures. Many of which are the property owners directly facing these homes. And as opposed to, you know, you know, 186, which is significantly set back from the road and, uh, you know, has less of an orientation to the other homes, aside from the one directly abutting her. So just wanted to bring that out.
I'm now.
Gone over and gotten the signatures.
Okay, I'm now realizing why I didn't pick up on this, even though the notice says excludes, the notice on our agenda excludes 240. Your letter includes it. And that was, I just assumed, and that was my error. As I see, as I see, looking at the signatures that 240 had not agreed and that does change it significantly. Does anybody on the commission have any parting thought for Mr. Newman, other than go to the Board of Appeals and see how you do with the variances?
Can also take a look, a look at section 6-109, if you have a historic home.
Yeah, you could do that. You know, that's a very good idea, Mr. Newman. You could take a look at the HO and you could do a historic overlay for your house and that would give you ability to expand your building footprint, which is what you seem to be looking for and only impact your property and you would retain the property value of, of of what Ms. Liu is arguing, the RA2 property value. Uh, you were going to say something else, Mr. Newman, and then we're going to say goodbye to you. Okay. Cause we got a big agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, did you want to add something before we say goodbye?
So, so go get the history of the variances. Look, you know, the historical overlay, obviously that's got its pros and cons. But I just want to be clear, 248 would also like to do this. 190 has said they're quite, you know, supportive of it. So really, it's, you know, one abutting neighbor. And one of the four homes to, you know, to confirm. And, you know, as I was, you know, pointing out, those homes are dramatically over their historic FAR. They, they've been rebuilt in the last 20 years. And they're not historic homes sort of anymore. These other homes are, you know, trying to, uh, you know, keep their sort of status without necessarily doing the historic overlay.
We got you. And in the meantime, we're going to talk to our attorney a little bit about how we would handle it. Okay, so we'll see you if we see you. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We are now going to go into item two, which is our decision items for tonight. The first one is 171 Hamilton Avenue LLC for a final site plan and special permit for an 830G application. And I'd like to make clear that seated on this item are Albin, McCray, Low, Barilak and Jeski. Okey dokey. And the item is. Okey-dokey, and, um, the item is closed, so we may now go into decision mode and discuss it. I'm going to just say, you all heard me, uh, with the concerns. And I've had ample time to think about it. I'm going to phrase it a little differently now. My, my concern is that an eight thirty G does not include commercial as of right. However, the commercial in this property is conforming with the zone. And I could make an argument that that does conform. It is not, as the applicant kept saying, a bootstrap way of bringing in also excessive commercial under the guise of an eight thirty G. In addition, uh, the, the, that debate, that, that internal debate that we, that I was having about, you want retail continuity. And at the same time, I don't see an eight thirty G granting commercial as of right. I was struggling with that because I think the retail is good for the, for the commercial district in which it is. Um, so if there's a way that we could address that in total, residential good, commercial fits, but I just in concept, don't see commercial as being an as of right part of eight thirty G. And I may be using the long, the wrong legal language, so you two attorneys just go with what I'm saying. Eight thirty G doesn't let you do lots of, of that. Um, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Finkelstein. Um, it, you raised your hand after, if you're here to speak about Lake Avenue, we've already moved on and we're on a different item now. I apologize. So what are your thoughts on that? Do people have thoughts on this issue of how we combine the thoughts of it works, this application to me works for the neighborhood? Um, but I just have this larger concept about the eight thirty G. Thoughts?
I, I share your, uh, concerns about the eight thirty G and the, for want of a better term, the, it, the establishing it legitimacy or precedent, if you will, um, with, with the combination of retail with the eight thirty G. So while I'm very sympathetic to, uh, the effort here, um, and if there was a way to, to work this out, um, uh, I think that would be great, uh, but I, I'm concerned about its impact, whatever we do, uh, down the road. And this serving as a, some sort of template for something else, while it may work perfectly in this location. Uh, I, we, we as a commission and as a town have to think beyond, um, this, this area town or the, these few blocks or, or what have you. Um, so that, that's my thought.
Nick, you were going to say something. I think you had your mouth open and I think then Bob wants to say something. Do you?
Uh, it's that, that issue of, I think you raised it, that you have a, a retail component that fits, it conforms. And then you have an eight thirty G, which is a benefit to the town. But when you combine them, it, it seems that they're, they're, they're not, not competing, but it just seems that one doesn't fit with the other. You're having, yeah, retail and housing. Uh, one that's actually, I'm trying to look up the, the phrase here that, uh, um, one of the, uh, judges had used, but I, I, I find, yes, if you had one or the other fine on its own, it's great, but a mixed use just seems almost in a sense that are overreach, you know? I, i- is it, is it, is it residential on upper floors? And that are, you know, what two floors are residential and one for retail? Is it better off as it's all retail, all residential? It's just the whole mix just seems a little uncomfortable to me.
Uh, what? Oh, sure.
That, you know, like you said, continuity of the retail is great. The housing is great, but together it just seems that we're creating a something that's, uh, in it, too much of an impact on the neighborhood.
Mr. Barilak, you were going to say something?
No, I, 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 I think this is really pretty simple, actually, from my, the way I think about it anyway. Both retail and residential are allowed in the zone. The, the one-story resident, one-story retail, um, is allowed in the zone. The applicant isn't trying to use eight thirty G to put into the zone a use which is not allowed there. As was the, as was the case in some of the court decisions we saw. So he, he doesn't need eight thirty G for that. Starts with a, with a, with a retail that conforms as far as we've seen in every way. Then uses eight thirty G not to add a, uh, not even to add a, a residential use where it wouldn't otherwise be, but rather, um, to add height, to add stories, as, as far as I can see.
So what I'm hearing you say, and I, I kind of, I kind of heard it from Mr. Low as well. If we did this, if we looked at this in two parts, almost, that the commercial is conforming, that the residential is an eight thirty G, that if we looked at it in two pieces, we could do it um, as, we could do our decision for both. And that establishes that we don't see a commercial as out as of right. You know, across the board, no matter what you do, in the Cortezi case, for example, don't go bootstrapping. It is doubt, it reconfirms our view in that and says, but this is a commercial that fits with the zone. So that part is okay. If you were to come back, applicant whomever, and propose a commercial that does not fit in the zone or that is insanely like the Cortezi is huge, um, then we've established, and this is what's key, I think. We've established a precedent in our own decisions that we would again be able to take that apart and consider them separately. That we could always approve a residential, but to where, where a commercial exceeded what it should be doing in a zone, we would step in and limit it.
Exactly.
Okay, I like that. I think that's, that's a good way to go. Uh, Mr. Yeski?
But are, are so you suggesting that we need to kick this back to the applicant to separate the uses on the building?
No, I'm thinking maybe we could make the decision in two parts. That we could say we find that the commercial part is consistent with the zone, that the residential fits in eight thirty G and that we make it in two parts. Katie, um, am I unlegally, I know you're not really supposed to talk when we're in decision mode, but is this legally seem acceptable? I, I, I know Bob was an attorney in a previous life. Um,
Yeah, I know. I mean, yeah, there's no, there's no issue with
But you mentioned it. What got me thinking about it is you mentioned it at our last hearing. You said the word you used was bifurcate. And I, I flipped at the time at the last hearing. But as I struggled with finding the balance, that to me, so we could do, uh, what you called Katie at the last minute meeting, a bifurcated approval, where we say, cool for the commercial and cool for the eight thirty G, but it reserves us the ability to manage them separately in the future.
Right, if somebody came in later with
Wait, wait, wait. Too many people. Go ahead.
I would say that, and I, I, I know you're talking about this site and then you're talking about other sites. So you've got a couple of things going on here. Procedurally, I think in the future, um, it would be better to have two applications come in. However, you have an application before you and I think you can make two separate findings.
Well, I like that too. So, um, I like that too. I like the concept, but I, what I just want to establish is eight thirty G doesn't give you that, but sometimes it makes sense in a neighborhood. So we're good with it. Um, Dennis, does that answer your question?
Well, it does. I mean, I like it. I have always been leaning towards the retail, but I had a major problem with the precedents set around town. So what you're suggesting is two different votes, uh, you bifurcate. In this case, uh, retail is okay on the first floor because of the zone. Uh, when we get it the next time, we're going to say, if you want to bifurcate, you have to have two different applications. And you better make sure that, uh, you know, the, they're conforming to the, the underlying zone to begin with. Don't come in with something radically different. We're, we're not going to accept that at this point. So, yeah.
And do we have to do two different votes, Katie?
What you could do, yeah, what you Yeah, you would have to do that, but what you might want to do is just one decision letter. And what you could do is you could say, you could even say, you know, the statute's unclear a, as to the right way to go here. But it is clear, if this is how you find, in fact, that the commercial use is permitted in the underlying zoning and it's really a moot point since, since it is compliant to the, if that's in case how you find it. Um, and conversely, there's no public health and safety issue with the housing component of it. So I, I would just state, state what you're really saying, because that is what you're saying. You're saying it's, it's not clear in the statute. So it's not really relevant in this instance, since the underlying zoning is being met and the public health and safety issues of the affordable housing project to be in.
And I would also expand the, the commercial one to say it's proportional to the neighborhood. It fits into the neighborhood. With the notion that if somebody in the future wants to do a strip mall, uh, you know, and it's totally out of proportion to the neighborhood, we can use this as a precedent and say, wait a minute. We approved it there, but it's very proportional to the neighborhood. It fits in the flow of the whole street at this point in time.
Yeah, okay. Uh, um, anybody else? Um, if not, maybe, I don't know. I think Nick has the most concerns. He's, um, I don't know, Nick, are you kind of on board with that? Or should I just ask you if you can make a motion?
What I found, what I, I found what I was looking for, and I think this is the, what I was trying to state before. It was the Marsh Hill, uh, thing. Uh, the statement was that the court further found that applying eight thirty G to mixed use applications could lead to absurd and unworkable results. And I think that's probably what I was looking at is the whole picture is that, is this, is this as mixed use in total with retail and, and the residential, um, uh, you know, has it led to an absurd or an unworkable result?
Oh, that's a great way of saying it. So what we're saying is, look, consistent with the ruling in Cortezi, consistent with, this is not an unworkable situation, but we pretty much reserve what we're setting to ourselves is we reserve the right to look at it differently in the future. Look at the commercial if it doesn't fit. Okay, so do you think if nobody objects, could you give it a crack, Nick?
I got, yeah, I have, I have one question.
He's scrawling away.
Now, I have one question. It's actually something I, I, in my notes, and I went back through everything, couldn't find one of the things that the applicant had talked about. Uh, engineering was talking about, uh, three different options for street parking. And I don't remember which one that the applicant had gone with. Uh, A, B, and C. Does, I don't know if anybody in the commission remembers which one it was.
No, but it's actually
I believe, I, I believe it was A. Oh, um, I'm, I'm going to go through my notes now.
Okay, so A was something about, uh, street parking, a lot of both. B?
It was B.
I, I thought, I thought it was B too, but I, I couldn't swear to it.
It's B.
It's the southern side of, uh, the View Street, right? That's, okay. Okay, if, yeah, somehow we can figure that out between now and when, uh, I think we probably could put something together here. Should we try?
Yeah, if, if, I saw you scribbling, so if you can
Nick, I know that the applicant actually put it in writing. I'm just struggling to come to it. So, um, I think if the decision happens, we will just state that we will go as the app, with the applicant's request and not
Yeah, that's perfect. And that's what we often do. It's not, we're not changing anything.
By the way, you had given me an I.
What?
Okay, uh, here we go.
Okay, so Mr. MacRae.
Okay, uh, one seventy-one Hamilton Avenue, application PLPC twenty twenty-one two six five. Applicants requesting final site plan and special permit approval to demolish existing Lily not conforming structures. Constructive proposed mixed use residential set aside development containing six unit residential units. Uh, first floor retail area and site improvements to the drainage infrastructure landscaping signage lighting located at, uh, one seventy-one Hamilton Avenue in the LBR two zone. Uh, we'll do this as a, as one, uh, one decision in two parts.
Yeah, with two votes was what Katie said.
Okay, so we'll get to that in a second. Whereas for the retail component, uh, the first floor consists of, uh, one thousand six hundred eighty-four square feet of retail area. The first floor conforms to the underlying LBR two zone in respect to use height FAR building and lot area coverage and parking. And the first floor area conforms to the underlying LBR zone two in respect to required yards per section six two oh five and six, and six one twenty-nine A. That's the average street setback for the housing component. And hopefully I got these numbers right. Uh, thirty percent of the proposed six rental units or two units would be restricted, uh, affordable unit, housing units. One, one bedroom unit would be deed restricted for forty years for families earning less than eighty percent of the statewide median income pursuant to, uh, six, uh, to section eight thirty G. And one two-bedroom unit would be deed restricted to forty years for families earning less than sixty percent of the statewide median income pursuant to eight thirty G. Uh, the commission finds that the sewer division issue comments on eight twenty-one indicating new issues to be addressed during P and Z, uh, commission review phase, engineering issue comments on ten thirteen twenty, uh, twenty-one indicating recent middle priority zoning building permit approval. Uh, ARC issue comments following their nine one twenty-one indicating that the committee recommends uh, return to a meeting with the understanding that the applicant can choose to move forward P and Z, uh, as reviewed. Uh, parking applicant is provided ten onsite spaces inclusive of one excess, uh, eleven onsite spaces inclusive of one accessible space. Uh, beta issued comments on ten thirteen twenty-one indicating, uh, issues to be addressed. Conservation issued comments on nine three twenty-one with concerns or recommendations to the project. And the housing specialist issue comments on nine eight twenty-one indicating no comments on the draft affordability plan. They did five five twenty-one submitted for review. Well, it is issued a parent needs questionnaire on one twenty-one indicating no action required. And the Greenwich Fire Department issue memo dated, uh, eight four twenty-one, stating the fire marshal's office has no objection to the preliminary proposal for mixed use building. And notes that this is not being considered a formal with, uh, plan review for building construction purposes. And that review would be performed at the time of building permit application. And the applicant has adjusted the proposal, proposed site plan to address, uh, the trash. Uh, therefore, motion, first part, motion to approve the retail component noting the following. For engineering comments, the applicant has chosen option, fill in the blank. Uh, for beta comments, the proposed driveways and curb cuts should be finalized in accordance with town standards. In coordination with town DPW staff prior to building permit, the applicant shall return to the ERC for review of both tenant signage and lighting. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues. Should we go on to the housing component or should we want to do this one first?
Why don't we do, um, this vote first, Katie, or can we let Nick finish? How can we?
You've, you've talked about the, the site as a whole, really. So I think now you
Okay.
Kind of split it.
Okay, so then we'll go on to the second and do two, two separate voices at the end. Okay?
Okay.
Uh, okay, so second part, therefore, motion to approve the housing component noting the following. Uh, priorities zoning permit, the final affordability plan should be reviewed by planning and staff. Have we recorded on the town land records? Find out what the affordability plan should include the parking management plan. And the applicant shall address any and all rating staff or interdepartmental issues. So we can go back and I guess vote on the retail component.
Okay, so first, do I have a second on the retail component of this application? I think this is the right way to do it. Mr. Barilak has seconded. Now, how do you vote?
I'm sorry, that's in conformance with your zoning regulations is the question that you
That it is in conformance with our zoning regulations that, and it, it is fully That it is in conformance with our zoning regulations that, and it is fully consistent. And that we approve it, that we would move to approve it. How do you vote, Mr. Yeski?
Aye.
Mr. Barilak?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
Albin is aye and Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. McRae is also aye. That is five, nothing. Now, for the second part of the motion, could I have a second on the residential part? That it is an 830G on which we have seen no issues that rise above our need for affordable housing in Greenwich. Could I have a second? Mr. Lowe has seconded. Okay, Mr. Yeski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Barilak?
Aye.
Mr. Lowe?
Aye.
Albin is aye and Mr. McRae?
Nay.
Mr. McRae has voted nay. Okay, so that motion is for one. And with that, we are done with that, I believe.
We are what? I'm sorry, my computer.
We are done with one. I think we're done. It is, that was a unique experience. I'm glad that we could work that out because I think that, that addressed key things. Okay.
Just for the public, so both motions passed and the project as a whole, even though.
Has been approved. Both motions passed and the project as a whole has been approved. And we have found the 830G to be not give rise to any significant health, safety, or other considerations that exceed our need for affordable housing. And we have found the commercial component to be fully consistent with our building zone regulations and the use in the district, et cetera, the use in the zone. Okay, now we go to the next decision item, which is Putnam 600 Acquisition LLC and 585 West Putt LLC, which is the final site plan and special permit at 581 and 585 West Putnam. We left the others open and I apologize, I cannot remember why we left the rest of them open. Why did we leave the rest of them open?
Their, their site plans matter, Chair. We can't close site plans. We have to act or, or leave them.
Oh, because of the special permit issue. Thank you. I kept looking at that thing and going, oh, these are all site plans. Okay.
I was just going to interrupt and say that I thought we were going to let the applicant in to.
No, because this item is closed, so you cannot interrupt because this item is closed. Item B of the decision items has to be done now because it's a closed item. And it's listed on the decision items, but you've listed it as a decision for now and then we would move to item three, which is the next application. You see the issue. That's what was bothering me.
I mean, you could, you could just kind of just keep opening or have it all. Maybe the thing to do is to move to the site plans. Just ensure that the applicant has no other issue, that the public has no other issue and then take the votes all parcels since, since you did, you take the projects all together since you did do that during.
My point for that, and I apologize, I didn't think about this till I was playing with the agenda today. I would have structured the agenda differently if that's what we're gonna do.
We discussed it, Mr. Leroy and I discussed it. And because it, what would have otherwise happened is then you have to go to open regular meeting, then you have to go back to discussion items. So it just seemed like, since you've handled all the applications as one throughout the entire public hearing process, it made sense to lay it out more cleanly this way, assuming that you would do the same at this stage of the game.
Okay, so you're telling us not.
It's your decision when you take up a decision. You could do it now, you could do it at the end of the meeting.
Okay, so you're, okay.
There's no public component to the decision part of it. It's only to the site plans that are open.
I'm totally good with that. Okay. Nobody forget that for the future, okay? Because I kept staring at the agenda today. Okay. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna go ahead and do three, four, and five, and then we're gonna come back and decide. Okay, unless we have to leave.
Just like a quick open and close kind of thing?
Well, unless somebody comes up with something huge and significant, we wouldn't know that. All right, so let's let the applicant in. No applicant?
Mr. Tessie, we're trying to promote you, so please accept. He has declined.
Okay, so Mr. Tessie doesn't want to discuss his applications. Mr. Tessie, we're gonna give you one last chance and otherwise you're gonna be in big trouble.
He doesn't have anything more to say.
Now he raised.
You could just, if there's anything the commission.
No, it's all right. It's all right. When you get that, you only get, you'd only get a nanosecond to say that you're willing to be a panelist and then it goes away. So if Mr. Tessie was dozing at his desk.
Here we go.
There you go. All right. Okay, so you now have, you heard that three, four, and five, that we're still combining and then we're gonna hopefully close. And if you would like to go ahead. And you don't have to say much if you don't want to say much.
I, I actually don't have much to say, but we're combining three, four, and five applications. And these applications are adjuncts, as you know, to the item, the decision item you have decision to be on your call. The reason these applications are before you with respect to each of the properties involved are as follows. With regard to application 408, which has to do with the corner lot, what we call Building Nine internally. We are proposing to eliminate its current curb cut on West Putnam Avenue. Reconfigure the parking lot, which is located to the west of the bill, of the building, which is an office building, as you know, part of Greenwich Park complex. And provide for a driveway from the Building Nine property right onto the new proposed, I'll call it roadway that begins on West Putnam Avenue and substantially an existing curb cut on the five, on the 581 parcel. Again, the subject of the to be decision to be made on your call. What happens by doing this is we, which the D, which is state and then in DPW likes, we are eliminating a curb cut and having a situation where there will be this one driveway onto West Putnam Avenue to service both, but in this case, both properties, build what we call Building Nine and the 581, new 581 slash 585 residential building being proposed to be on essentially the 581 site. With regard to the number four application, which has to do with of the central area of what we call Office Park, but has a post office address of as 581 West Putnam Avenue. Essentially, there is very little work being done on the property except for the, the work that will help create the drive-through from the park that how, that contains what we call buildings one through six, under six office buildings there. As you know, there are existing two ways to ingress and egress the park. One on Weaver Street, the west side of the park, and one onto Valley Drive on the east side of the park. This provides a third at access point, which will allow for a more formal entry into the park, which is something Mr. Ferrari very much wanted to have as part of his, called his vision for what he's trying to accomplish West Putnam Avenue. The third item, which is five on your goal, is the King Valley Drive. And that again is another office building. We refer to it internally as Building Eight. That property essentially is asserting the same purpose as the as the central Greenwich Park parcel in that it provides for this connection between West Putnam Avenue and the park, including Building Eight now. And we're proposing, as you all know, and as we discussed by the last meeting, a turnaround for FedEx trucks and UPS and the like. But the central drive remains a central drive. It's just that if there's a package, and we all know there are more and more of them for overnight deliveries, one can pull off the roadway easily. And so it's like a parking space, really. But not a permanent parking space for the delivery vehicles to come in and out and not disrupt the traffic flow on the driveway. And some have something a little extent aesthetically more pleasing than just a parking space at that location.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Tessie. Does anybody have any questions on the commission? Does anybody in the public wish to comment on these three applications? Does anybody on the commission object to closing these three applications? Okey dokey, that being the case, all three applications are hereby closed. And at this point, I would suggest that we decide, you're very welcome. And at this point, I would suggest that we decide that we go ahead with to be and we decide all three of these other applications and then move on to the public hearing. Faithful Secretary. There is no discussion from the commission. Does the commission wish to discuss this or may we ask Faithful Secretary for a motion?
Just to understand, we'll do the site plan special permit first technically.
Yep.
And then the other four or the other three, they would be separate because they're separate things. So I think if we're going by site plan number 407 would be first, that's the 581. And then we'll start at 49410 and 48409 and 410. Okay. You ready? Notes here. Okay, application PLPZ 2021-407 for final site plan special permit, 581, 585 West Putnam Avenue. Applicant seeking approval of instructed new 65, 65,380 square foot four-story, 44-unit residential building and lower-level parking garage in the GBO zone. Whereas the, there are nine of the proposed units or 20% would be moderate income as defined by section 6110 of the building zone regulations. The existing commercial office building would remain at 585 and no work is proposed. The planning and zoning commission recognizes that this is part of four applications in and around the GOP Greenwich Office Park site. And this proposal will provide a revised Greenwich Office Park campus access to West Putnam Avenue. Commission finds that zoning issue comments on 22621 indicating proposal meets the requirements of the building zone regulations and endorse the project zoning permit, noting the lot coverage informs to section 6110G5. Sewer issue comments stated 1022 indicating no comments during the planning and zoning commission review phase. Outstanding issues concerning the downstream sewer system improvements committed to by the applicant can be addressed at the time of sewer permit phase. Engineering issued comments on 102221 indicating engineer concerns that can be addressed prior to zoning permit sign-off and outstanding traffic concerns can be resolved by the planning and zoning commission. ARC issued comments from their 8421 meeting indicating a return to or construction document review. Conservation issued comments stated 111220 indicating recommendations to the proposal. Well, it's issued a permit, the permit number 2018113 dated 924. The housing specialists and affordability plan and declaration of restrictions comments of the plans were issued on 225. And parking, the proposal will provide 121 total parking spaces shared with 581 West Putnam Avenue. Therefore, motion to approve noting the following. Prior to zoning permit, the revised project shall be submitted to the Connecticut Department of Transportation for review and approval. The proposed changes to the driveway. A level of service review for West Putnam curb cut shall be conducted by, and this is, I think we have to make sure we're got this detail right. The level of service review by West Putnam curb, of the West Putnam curb cut should be conducted by the applicant. Six, I believe it was six or 12 months post full occupancy or would it be certificate of occupancy? And then submitted to the planning and zoning commission to ascertain if the driveway requires modification to a right turn in and right turn out configuration. So the question on that would be, the applicant is going to do a study in six or 12 months after post full occupancy or after certificate occupancy? What would you think of that?
I'm not allowed to speak, right?
No, I'm asking the commission.
I remembered it's 12 months.
Okay, 12 months and it's after full occupancy, obviously we've done in the past, or the CO?
It should be after. It makes sense that it be full occupancy. Whatever we said, it makes sense to be full occupancy because we won't know until everybody's there. Now, I don't know how we find that out. That's the problem, whereas we know the CO staff have a preference. We won't know when they're at full occupancy, so you want to just do CO.
Yeah, I mean, what we've done in the past, I'm just like, I'm thinking of.
It's been CO.
Yeah, 100 East Putnam Avenue, we've had, you know, the, the, the building can get constructed and then we've said when each tenant comes in, they need to come in for a quick sign-off.
Why don't we just do CO?
Because it's residential, so.
So CO, so it's 12 months.
Yeah, CO, 12 months from CO.
That's a better way to do. I'm sure they just will rent quickly, we think.
Okay, done. Prior to zoning permit, parking processes for spaces on 585, 581 and 581, 551 Weaver shall be recorded in the town land records. Prior to zoning permit, the housing specialist comments and the affordability plan and declaration of restrictions shall be addressed. Prior to zoning permit, the applicant should prepare and record in the town records, records and lot, a lot map merger combining 581 and 585. Prior to zoning permit, the affordability plan declaration of restrictions shall be recorded on the town land records. For conservation comments, a minimum of two electric car charging stations should be provided time of development. A measure should be put in place to accommodate the need for future charging stations. Prior to zoning permit, the applicant should return to ARC for 50% of construction document review. Get firm the detail on the following, the building material samples and colors, window cut sizes, layout and detail. Exterior residential door cuts and size and detail, brick detailing. Final site landscaping, final site signage programming. Final lighting and program fixture specifications, railing details, and garage screening details. And the applicant shall address any and all other remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have, do I have a second? Sorry about the dogs, but do I have a second? Mr. Levy has seconded again, seated on this application is Albin, McRae, Levy, Yeski, and Lowe. Mr. Lowe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Yeski?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Albin is also aye. McRae?
Aye.
Okey dokey, and with that, this motion for the site plan and special permit passes five, nothing, and we go to the final site plan for, we're gonna do them piece by piece, right?
Yeah, real quick. Okay.
Zero. Okay, real quick, Mr. Tessie. Just kidding. Zero, zero, West Putnam Avenue.
Okay, so this is a application 2021-408, the zero West Putnam Avenue. Applicant seeking approval to abandon the driveway egress to West Putnam Avenue. Reconfigure surface parking and connect via new curb cut at Greenwich Office Park, Building Nine to the proposed driveway access at 581 West Putnam Avenue. In a relationship to PLB P Z four zero seven in the GBO zone. Whereas the planning and zoning commission recognizes this is part of four applications in and around the Greenwich Office Park site. The proposal will provide a revised Greenwich Office Park campus access to West Putnam Avenue. Therefore, motion to approve, noting the following. Prior to zoning permit, the revised project shall be submitted to Connecticut Department of Transportation for review and approval of the abandonment of the driveway. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staffer in departmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Low, how do you vote?
Aye.
Yaski.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Albin is also I and Mr. MacRae.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes five, nothing. Our next decision is at fifty-one Weaver Street.
Okay, PLPZ four oh nine, fifty-one Weaver Street. Applicant seeking to approval to connect the Greenwich Office Park interior roadway system. At the back of Greenwich Office Park Building five, the proposed driveway access of five eighty-one West Putnam Avenue. A relationship to PLPZ four zero seven and GBO zone. Planning and zoning commission recognized this is part of four applications in and around the Greenwich Office Park site. Proposal will provide a revised Greenwich Office Park campus access to West Putnam Avenue. Therefore, motion to approve, noting the following, the applicant shall address any and all remaining staffer in departmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Low, how do you vote? I'm sorry, Levy has seconded. Mr. Low, how do you vote?
Aye.
Yaski.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Albin is also I and MacRae.
Aye.
And that moves us on to the third one, which is eighteen Valley Drive.
PLPZ four ten applicant seeking to approval to connect via roadway loop at Greenwich Office Park Building number eight to the Greenwich Office Park interior roadway system. At Greenwich Office Park five and a proposed driveway access at five eighty-one West Putnam Avenue. By relationship to PLPZ four zero seven and four zero nine in the GBO zone. Whereas the P planning and zoning commission recognizes this is part of four applications and around the GOP site. They propose that proposal will provide a revised Greenwich Office Park campus access to West Putnam Avenue. Therefore, motion to approve noting the following. The applicant shall address any and all of remaining staffer in departmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Low, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Yaski.
Aye.
Mr. Levy.
Aye.
Albin is I and Mr. MacRae.
Aye.
The motion passes five, nothing. And with that, all those applications have been approved. And we may now move on to the public hearing and I see Mr. Basili is ready. Mr. Basili, you all said, I'm just checking in with you. You can just give me the, the.
Yes, ready.
Okey dokey. The first item in the public hearing is Habad Lubavitch of Greenwich for a final site plan and special permit, and this is to modify conditions that were put in place in the prior land use decisions. At two seventy Lake Avenue. If the applicant would please proceed. Hello, Mr. Hegney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the director, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant.
Okey doke. Mr. Hegney, would you please proceed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We were last before you on this application on the September twenty-eighth meeting. This involves modifying certain conditions that affect the Carmel Academy property at two seventeen Lake Avenue. And also backs up to the Ridgeway. It's actually two separate parcels in the, in the history of the, the title to the property. We proposed two amendments to you at that meeting. One was to add preschool and kindergarten to the grades one through nine that are currently permitted. And also to provide that preschool at children and kindergartners would be dropped off by car rather than being required to come by bus. At the hearing, it was pointed out that the number of cars that we have for faculty for the Japanese school, which is currently on the property, but is leaving in March and the Abbott preschool already exceeds the thirty that is permitted under the current conditions on the site. So we have amended our application to include adding fifty rather than thirty as the number of faculty cars that can come on the campus. This is just the case for this next several months. After that, it won't be an issue. But we wanted to be able to proceed with this application now. We did send notice to the abutting property owners and filed the amended conditions and the, the notice of to the abutters with the staff. We were also asked at the time to provide an outline of a master plan. And we did submit that as well. I wanted to go over some of the discussion that we had at the briefing yesterday. Which was about who's the appropriate party to be submitting the special permit application. And is it appropriate for the commission to consider this now? Carmel Academy is the owner of the property. The Bot Lubavitch of Greenwich is the applicant. It is both a tenant on the property and is also a contract purchaser for the property. Carmel is owner of the property has authorized the Habad to make the application. And that's how we establish the right to do that. It occurs regularly when people have contracts to purchase property and want to proceed with applications before you. Before they actually own the property themselves, as long as the owner of the property consents and provides that authorization. There is currently a lawsuit pending that was brought by the Rock Ridge Association claiming that they have a right of first refusal on the property. Carmel and was particularly Carmel's title company dispute that claim. And the case is currently pending in court. Whoever is the owner of the property going forward, these conditions will apply to them. Because zoning applies to the use and not to the owner. Habad is a participant and occupant of the property and a contract purchaser. And in that vein seeks to amend the conditions. The Habad is a religious organization that has a religious school, which has operated on the campus since the fall of twenty twenty. Looking, they're looking to maintain those classes within the hours they're permitted under the conditions as they exist now. Discussions of limiting activities on the campus, which were part of your, your discussions yesterday at the briefing. Are related to the school operation. When I look at what is being done here, I also compare it to the other nine private schools that operate in town. And there needs to be a equal application of how both regulations and conditions are applied to all of those, particularly for schools that have a religious focus such as the Habad School. And to limit the use on a campus that has a religious school. Where it eliminates such things as special events would be considered discriminatory and is not permitted. The proposed modifications of these conditions are really very minor. They are not going to affect the neighborhood. They're not going to affect what goes on on the campus. They're going to permit levels of class before first grade, the pre, preschool and the kindergarten. And it will allow the Habad to continue to grow its religious school on a yearly basis with adding a one additional class each year. We did have a traffic study done. And Mr. Adler is available to comment on that if you would like to hear from him. I would also like to ask Rabbi Darren to address the commission. And he has a few remarks he would like to share with you. If we could bring him into the participants, please.
You're muted.
Sorry, yeah, I had barking dogs. You always get to that when UPS shows. Okay, so do you want him to, do you want Rabbi Darren to speak now or would you rather wait until the?
I'd rather have him speak now and then if there are any questions, we can have Mr. Adler address them.
Okay, um, I, I see Mariachi Darren's hand up, but I'm not seeing the rabbis. I'm wondering if maybe Mariachi, the rabbi is using his wife's computer, so I'm going to take a chance.
It would not be the first time that that has occurred.
Okay, I hope she gave him permission. Okay. And everyone else who has their hand up, their virtual hand up, ah, she's supervising the use of the computer. Hello, both. Everybody else who has their hand up, just be patient. I see counsel for the opposition has their, has her hand up and now we will call on you as the first person in the public to speak. And everybody else, just keep your hands up and we will call on you in sequence. We will probably limit your time speaking, however. Okay, Rabbi and Mrs. Darren, Ms. Darren, whatever you prefer, please go ahead.
Thank you. I thank the commission for reviewing our application tonight. And for the opportunity to address you. I just want to say a few words and you know, either myself or Tom are happy to answer any questions that you may have. I want to start by saying that I believe that our interests are fully aligned with yours, with the commission. Habad and the current landlord Carmel Academy, we want what's best for the community. And our goal is to use this site in a way that shows that our town is a place where people feel welcome and have a sense of belonging. And the application before you today will enable us to advance towards that goal. Specifically, what we're asking for is a special permit from the commission to provide the educational programs for the students in preschool, which complements the existing permitted use that allows education from first through ninth grade. This will enable us to provide the service that the community has come to rely on for the past twenty-three years. And it really revives the, the private school heritage of this site itself. As you know, Habad has been operating the preschool for decades. We've been here since September of twenty twenty. At that point, we came in under administrative approval from the town planner. And we're requesting this permanent approval for what we've been doing. And I'll say what we've been doing successfully with great benefit to the community for the past fourteen months. The Japanese school is leaving. Carmel Academy is shuttered. And it really would be an honor for us to pick up the mantle of continuing the site's century-long tradition of education. Of course, we recognize that some of Carmel's neighbors, as well as some of the commission members, have expressed concerns about our use of the property. And I want to address two main areas of concern that have been raised in discussion with Rock Ridge and with other neighbors. Traffic and noise. Sorry, before I do that though, I do want to say that we are very taken by the warm reception we've received. The warm reception we've received from many neighbors. Including members of Rock Ridge, many of who take advantage of the beautiful grounds, who we welcome with open arms as they stroll the walkways or on the fields of the campus. And that's the kind of campus we hope to be, that's welcoming to the neighbors and, and really enhancing the, enhancing the neighborhood. Regarding traffic. We have, as Attorney Hegney said, we have the traffic study that has analyzed the use of the, the proposed use of the property. That's reflected in our application. We have seen very closely that there has not been an adverse impact on the traffic. The study supports that. The facts on the ground support it. And with respect to noise, I want to reiterate our commitment that we are going to use the site only in ways that are expressly permitted. You know, there are ordinances I have here, the entire section of the Greenwich Municipal Code. Six B about noise. And obviously we're going to comply with those. As it relates to issues that have come up in the past, and if anything comes up in the future, I do want to point out to the commission that, and this is especially important for the neighbors as well. You'll see in our application that we did reach out to talk to the neighbors. We've had some very fruitful conversations. We are not yet the owners. And as such, we're in a little bit of a twilight zone. Once we are the owners, but even now, I want to offer the quote unquote, a hotline to either myself or Mariachi. And the chair said she's supervising my computer use. She actually supervises everything I do. Everything that happens in Habad is thanks to her. But in all seriousness, we are both fully accessible by any of the neighbors at any point in time, whenever there are questions or concerns, and we try to address those in a timely manner. We've also shared in our application ideas about how we may use this in the future if we become owners. And again, I want to stress that the reason why we put that into the application was because we want to be we want to be transparent. But those aren't the issues that are on the table right now. We haven't tried to hide anything. And we're more than, we're more than willing to talk about future plans when those plans take more of a tangible shape. But ultimately, I just wanted to stress the fact that we want to build a strong relationship with Rock Ridge Association, with the neighbors on Lake Avenue, with Field Club. And we're committed to see to it that this site will benefit the entire community of Greenwich. So thank you for the opportunity to be able to address you tonight. And I look forward to working in the future for the benefit of the community.
I think you both very much. Commissioners, do you have questions or comments? Oh, silence. Mr. Yaski, it looks like you want to say something. You're moving your camera.
Putting it off the mute. I guess I have a question to Mr. Hegney. Unless I misunderstand it, the conditions that were listed in the the last go around are the conditions you're agreeing to, with the exception of the, of the, of the vans and the buses and that sort of thing. Was there anything else about that that you were proposing to change?
No, the only other one that was problematic currently is that the Japanese school already has thirty faculty driving to the campus and we were proposing to add fourteen. And the limit was only thirty. So with our amendment to the conditions, we were proposing to change that thirty to fifty. So that fifty faculty members on, for both programs would be permitted to drive, up to fifty would be permitted to drive to the campus.
Hey, but then you went on to say that you, you would expect similar conditions to other schools in town, something like that. I was listening to it, but. I was listening to it, but I don't remember everything you said. Could you kind of get back into that?
Certainly, and I appreciate your, your focusing on that. There was some discussion yesterday about limiting the amount of other kinds of activities, such as special events that could occur, parent nights, other particular activities that might be outside the classroom, but important to the operation of the school. And we would want, certainly want to be able to conduct those activities just as all the rest of the schools in, in town do. And, and that's really what I was referring to in my remarks earlier.
Okay. So there, there's a couple of lines in there that talk about the, the hours of operation and no weekends. But then there is a clause in there that says something, you know, with exceptions, special exceptions of something to that effect. So like if you want to do a parents' night, you'd come in and ask for a special exception, I assume.
No, I think that the language as it exists right now would permit that because that is a, a special event that would be held by the school and that, and that is permitted out, outside the hours of the normal classroom day.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Are these, these are strictly school-related events? I mean, that you're you're, the, the, the language is except for special events. So I'm assuming that the special events refer to school-related.
Yes, these would be school-related special events. Yes.
Mr. Hegney, would you say that but for? Maybe I should direct this to Darren. Anybody can reply, but for these exceptions that you're asking for, what, won't this school operate basically the way that Carmel Academy did?
Yes, very much so. Except I, I think there may have been other activities that were going on on the weekends, not particularly related to the Carmel Academy that I think did cause issues in the past. And as Rabbi Darren has indicated, they're, they're a tenant there now. They're not the owner and they would look to address those as part of being an owner.
And as far as sports are concerned, you plan to have sports and they're going to be teams and buses and those kinds of things that were your normal activities for a school.
That, that's true. That, that would be part of, as the school continues to add a grade each year, there would be those normal school activities and sporting activities. Yes.
Thank you.
More questions? If nobody?
I'm very much looking forward to the continuation of, of the, the school use on this property. It's a greatest store property. And I, knowing that Darren's, I'm very comfortable that they can do a good job as they always have.
So, yeah, the trepidation and Rabbi Darren spoke to it. I think the trepidation is, how do I put this up? So I, I was literally, I was at an event a few days ago and neighbors joining a school basically surrounded me with concerns. And that is the, the job of the commission is always to make sure that a school fits in and continues to fit in and that the, that the events are such that the residential uses are not impacted and that's, are not significantly impacted. And that's always our balancing act that we do believe in having these non-residential uses in, in residential neighborhoods, but we have to balance. And now we have to go and look into this other school, which and, and understand whether, where the, you know, where there is fact and perception. Because of course, people can be very sensitive at certain hours of the day or on weekends. And the issue is, of course, it's weekend use, which has been troubling these neighbors. So that's some of the stuff we do have to weigh it. If you all don't have any more questions right now and Mr. Hegney doesn't object, I'd like to bring in Mr. Hegney.
Could I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Yes, of course.
Would, Mr. Hegney, could you address the comment that was raised by Beta? They just had one outstanding issue, I think, in the end about how, how are you actually going to enforce the separation between the two sides? There wasn't a lot of talk about it.
I, 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 yes, Katie, I saw what they, the comment that they made that about equalizing the traffic between Rock Ridge, the Ridgeway and with Lake Avenue. We would, because of where the, the preschool classes are and because there's a, a very handy drop-off area there that you cannot get to very easily from the Rock Ridge, from the Ridgeway road. We would still propose to have all of the preschool traffic enter for the drop-off and pickup from Lake Avenue. As the school continues to grow and we add more of the classes of older children, we can then equalize the amount of traffic between the Ridgway and Lake Avenue. But as, as we go through this current year, I think it's appropriate, given the, the road network on the campus, the parking areas, the drop-off area and where the building is located. It's, it's better to have, at least for this year, that traffic primarily on Lake Avenue.
Are you suggesting, Mr. Hegney, that with more grades added that, that did not involve younger children? That you would have that, those pickup and drop-offs on the Ridgway side?
Well, for the older children, yes, I think it's appropriate there. And also those children would be coming by bus. Whereas with the, the preschool children, they need to be in car seats and need to be transported in, in, in cars.
Okay, if I, so I, may I take it to the public comment? And I would begin with Attorney Kaufman, Mr. Hegney.
Certainly, Madam Chair.
So Ms. Kaufman, I just have to, there she is.
Hi, good evening. Give me one moment here, my. Try to un. All right, it's really, there's my video working. There we go. Good evening. How are you tonight? My name is Jackie Kaufman. I'm an attorney with Carmody Torrance, Sandec and Hennessy. I represent the Rock Ridge Association, Inc. I'd like to start to by thanking you all for your time last month and also for compelling the applicant to make the modifications to its application that it has to date and to provide the information that it did in the last few days, which was helpful to, to our group and responded to some questions that we've been asking for quite a long time. And also for some of your thoughtful comments that were made yesterday during the briefing, which I think are helpful to guide the discussion tonight and already have. In response to, to what was most recently submitted, we also responded today and provided a copy also to the applicant with some additional documents. And we were hoping that some of the information that we received would advance the conversation or perhaps change the position of Rock Ridge Association as we, as we stated at the last meeting. However, regretfully, it has not. We remain in opposition to the proposal. And I'd like to go through some of the materials that we've provided to you and respond to some of the comments we've heard tonight. Specifically, and this, there was a letter that we submitted to you. Grabbing a copy of it now. But a few things on that. We wanted to start by correcting something in the record, both, both tonight and, and some things that Attorney Hegney has, has put in. And certainly none, no one in Rock Ridge Association or the community would dispute the, the enrichment and the good work that the Chabad does for the community. You know, without question, they're an important part of this community. And a school use, which has been permitted here, is, is something that both by deed and by zoning regulation has been permitted. This is a 100-year-old association. The school uses date back decades. We've provided you the history of all of this so that I, I know you have it. And again, I appreciate that you've taken the time to look through such, you know, extensive compendium. But I think it's important and, and it does color the way that both the Rock Ridge Association comes, comes to this application and, and comes to now with this opposition. And also should influence the way that you determine if this applicant is, has indeed met the special permit criteria that are necessary for you to, to bring its application. And it's important to talk through these things because it, it, it really does paint a color. With the better part of this year, really since, since March, since February, these two parties have been in discussion about what's before you. And it's not just the continued school use for the upper grades, which certainly can be challenged. But it's also about introducing a new use, which is not a school use. A preschool, a daycare is not a school use. It has a completely separate licensing component. Certainly, it is a, a filter into a regular school use, but it has a completely different traffic component to it. And we don't think that the, the special permit criteria have been satisfied. And at least several of them have not been articulated to you by the applicant in an express way that you would be able to make findings tonight or in the future that they meet those standards. So I'd like to go through those with you as well. And, you know, the history is important. And I know that Attorney Hegney said last time that, you know, we've spoken and that it hasn't necessarily been, been meaningful. Or, and then he submitted a letter in May that said, we're no longer going to speak to you. And I think it's misleading in the way that that information was presented to you because it really has been Rock Ridge Association since February. And I lay this out in my letter with a timeline, February, March, April. I, I won't go through it ad nauseam, but it's always been the, the Rock Ridge Association that has reached out and asked for more information, asked for more communication. And they were met with resistance each time. It was never, it was never what we just heard from Rabbi Darren, which is, of course, pick up the phone, call me and we'll do it. It was always, let me see, or it's not this lawyer. It was a little bit like when you go to the store and you go into a section and you ask somebody something and say, I don't work here. We called each lawyer and each person said, you know what? I don't represent that part. Call this person, call that person. And it was a series of phone calls before, it was a month before we could even get anyone over a month, where we could get everybody on the phone together. And that was frustrating. And it was during that first call that it was articulated that, you know what? We can be here. This, for right of first refusal that you discussed doesn't really exist. We, we're, we're not supportive of even looking into it. And also, yes, we will file an application for preschool. Maybe that was in March, they agreed to do that. And it wasn't until staff compelled them to do it in July that they actually did it. And that, that they were protected because of the religious component to the educational use and that other things that they had talked about in this master plan, which they spoke to, Joe, this was back in March, you know, would, would, would be protected and they would get everything that they wanted. So there, from the beginning, there was a bit of, of, of a push and pull on, on information and a, a resistance to even follow the rules or even acknowledge that they were a party or would be a party. Certainly, their landlords are party Carmel to, to local agreement. So it, it has been the experience of Rock Ridge and others who are party to this agreement that the Chabad is using the, you know, the zoning approvals and modifying the zoning approvals as a way to circumvent even the private approvals. So I understand and respect that that's not your jurisdiction to oversee and enforce private restrictions. Many of those private restrictions are codified and, and reiterated in the conditions of zoning approval that have existed over the, the last several years. And I believe that's in tab 11 or 12. I include the copy of the approvals, but we did a little short review of what all those conditions are. And several of those have been violated time after time. And there is no effective enforcement. And I'm not saying this is a criticism to the town because certainly when you have a condition, you want it to be enforceable. But I think we all know how challenging it is sometimes to enforce certain conditions. And these are not, these are not secrets to the Chabad. We've shared those with them. So it feels somewhat disingenuous to stand here and say, there's always an open line of communication. We promised to stand here and stand by our conditions and follow the rules. When over the last year and a half, or the last, yes, almost year and a half now, and several times in the, in, in the last three to four months, that those fall on deaf ears. I mean, we, even in, in my outreach to, to counsel, that, to say, I'm here, I'm available to talk if you have any questions, what can we do? And, and I haven't heard anything back. And it's, you know, to pull, pull all the information myself. For instance, we've asked for these master plan. And it's, it's a light master plan at best, I mean, really. But I do, I do appreciate that it's been submitted. But I mean, it's by no means fully vetted. But it certainly does introduce uses that they have and that were not properly permitted, that they want and to potentially continue that could have a, a long-term impact, but really represent an incremental creep of, of the, the larger institution that wants to be built here. And the, and, and the concern is, and one that I'm sure you've heard before, is that approving uses in piecemeal is that an applicant will try to maximize the entitlements that it is permitted to potentially enter, I should say, with a religious institution, maximize its education, that say, these educational uses or other special permit uses, provided that it actually comes to and asks for them. Because they've made it clear to us that they don't think they need to ask for many of these. And then after maximizing those, will return with additional uses that they believe will be, you know, protected by Ralupa. And most certainly, and this is not, this is about intensity of use, not about the type of use. But I will say that everything you said about Ralupa is absolutely, it, it is accurate and is accurate, except that only to an extent. It does not protect an applicant from having to come to the commission to demonstrate that special permit criteria are met. It just means that the use itself can't be discriminated against. And also that there can't be, you know, vague in general, oh, we don't want this use just because it's potentially a religious use. And that is not what's happening here. You know, there are, there are cases, there's actually a Supreme Court case here in Connecticut that I also mentioned to you in my letter. That's very critical, I think, when, as you approach this to, to take heed of. And that is, I'm just pulling up the, the note I have to myself. It is, it's a case out of Newtown. And the law doesn't provide a blanket exemption from the zoning laws. As a general matter, religious institutions must also apply for the same permits and follow the same requirements and go through the land use protections as other land users to ensure that there's no undue impact on the community. And this particular case is important. It is, here it's Cambonia Buddhist Society, the Planning and Zoning Commission of Newtown. And this was a special exception application for religious use. The commission denied the special exception, Supreme Court upheld it and found that the zoning regulations were neutral and generally applicable to all property owners and did not allow for individualized assessments. That's an important component in, in Ralupa. But what was critical here, and I think that the commission needs to be mindful of, is that it also found, the court found that the commission properly determined that the level of activity would substantially impair property values and that proposed septic and water supply and that proposed septic and water supply systems would create health risks. Well, right now you have a a letter from the DPW Sewer Department that acknowledges that there are deficiencies in the sewer connections and plans that need to be addressed. We haven't heard anything, and that just has to do with this school component, right? So this mayor may not continue to to be considered deficient based on how, you know, the intensification that is intended over time. And and you should be mindful of that. So you haven't seen, you haven't seen that that conclusion or or any information about how that will be addressed. So I think that also represents a deficiency in in this application. So what you see, this is kind of all circles back to 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 the line of communication that we've had, that the complaints that have been filed with zoning about activity, about noise, the traffic, the the beta report still raises questions. Those questions are not answered. They haven't been answered by Tabad's expert. The zoning conditions, the that are part that are amended, number well, says the entrance at the school Lake Avenue shall be approved to the satisfaction of public works. I assume that has been done. I read the wrong one. Excuse me. It has to do with uses of traffic vans and buses. Obviously, that is changing because you can't have buses for preschool uses. And also, there needs to be I just lost my my location on the page. Excuse me for a second. Yes, 11. All vehicles shall be equalized between the two entrances. We're hearing now that that's not possible, and the banner report couldn't make any conclusion about that either. In fact, ends its last assessment with more questions. We have provided a supplemental traffic memo included as tab number 25 of our expanded exhibit compendium today, which also remarks that the traffic study was done at a time when levels of service were not peak. And that may also be misleading. So we there are also, there are sightline sightline measurements that have not yet been observed, and we've raised several things, both in this letter and in these in our prior comments to you that that demonstrate that the traffic report, as you have received it, also doesn't meet a standard that I think would be applicable to support any finding for a special a special permit here. And so these things keep being raised. Complaints are are raised to to staff. Mr. Hegney is very much aware of them. They have been raised in multiple conversations with the multiple council over the first several months of this engagement between these two these two groups. And yet the only thing you see from Attorney Hagny in your file is the one letter where Attorney Nolan, my partner, says, you know, I we're not going to continue with this discussion. And the discussion had to do with the right of first refusal, not necessarily with the overall expansion. And so that too was taken somewhat out of context. So that is the purpose of this timeline we've provided you with, but also is just indicative of the broader attitude that Habad and its its leadership and its council have taken toward both, I think, towards the town and also towards Rock Ridge. And it's distressing because we sit here tonight talking about the first step that they may want to take to a bigger and greater use, and one that may seem comfortable today, but is is simply going to grow. And, you know, a slight modification to conditions that we have absolutely no faith will be will be complied with. And and I think that should should raise some great concerns for the commission as well. They it it's good to hear it, and it's nice to hear it from Rabbi Darren here now that there will be a liaison, who will act as a liaison. But there has been no outreach over the last several months in response to these complaints that are very, very significant. And the zoning violations and complaints we had included in our prior comments under tab tab 6, tab 11, include letters you've had from the file for years and also most recently. But then in the last hearing, you had also asked if someone could summarize those for you. So it was your pleasure to do so, I guess. And we we did prepare a list in exhibit 23. And that list, you can see easily corresponds to the conditions and how those have been violated. There are several unpermitted uses that have been allowed on the property that are not consistent with a school. And they're certainly not consistent with a necessarily consistent with a preschool. But they are consistent with a religious community center, which certainly, you know, the Habad is. And we did try to play you, and as part of our PowerPoint last time, we tried to play you some of the not noise disturbances. And we're having trouble connecting through Zoom with with this audio. So I know that even one of the neighbors who may speak shortly may attempt also to do that. We may just have to bring you in a thumb drive. I think we had to do that today. But there are additional ones that other neighbors have that they'd like to share with you. And it is so loud, and these are taken, and it's it's noise that's produced from activities outside. And it is often customary, I represent many schools and many religious institutions, and condition a condition of approval often is that there shall be no amplified sound outside of, say, graduation, or maybe, you know, the the homecoming game. So so that certainly is a very common condition that one has to come back for special events if if there is going to be something that noisy there. But again, it's not about the content of the noise. It is about the noise levels themselves, and that 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 has been a consistent experience, and that hasn't received any response from Habad or from, you know, or from the town. So how how do we know that that won't continue or be called just another educational use? Because that's not that's not a consistent experience that this neighborhood has had here. And also, and again, this is between the 2003 agreement, which we've also added here. It was included in a larger tab of materials, but we included, we singled it out as tab 26 for ease of use. But that also, Habad is party to that agreement individually and agrees for summer camp not to have certain noise, noise producing activities or noise levels and and is not even acknowledging that here as we speak, that they're violating their their own private agreement with us. And there's been no acknowledgement of that whatsoever. The only enforcement that the community has felt that it has against noise complaint.
Just to stop you, just to stop you for a second, that agreement, I'm just looking at it. So that was no camp functions are to be held at any Rock Ridge private residence. The camp is to abide by the operating covenants of the Japanese school. All vehicular traffic on Ridgeway related to the camp shall be in accordance with a ZBA decision 7449. What was that ZBA decision?
Oh, hold on, let me pull that out.
I mean, you could just, you don't have to quote it if you remember what it was.
I just have to.
Yeah. And then, and then and then you're saying that Camp Gan, and then the last one thing is further noise abatement initiatives will be established by Camp Gan as outlined on 172003, and you're saying that did not happen. Well, this is a previous, but this is an agreement that was entered into, right? Is your point? But really, I was more interested with what to go back to that ZBA decision, which I didn't couldn't put my own thing.
What number was that, Madam Chair?
You, it's number six. It's what you just referred to.
But what what was the ZBA number?
Oh, I'm so sorry. It is 7449.
7449 was from 1989. That was the approval to modify usage within the school buildings, relocate tennis courts, and provide parking for buses. The approval notes, so these are my notes here. Approval notes that the application hearing, oh, no, you don't need to know that. Let's see, span to here, the traffic generation. See, enrollment was limited to 450 daytime students enrolled in grades four to nine. Applicant must certify enrollment annually with the ZEO. School operations limited to five days per week. 8:30 AM to 3:30 PM, and then it
Yeah, so we're just looking for what was the vehicular traffic on Ridgeway? This was a, that's what was in that decision supposedly.
No classes permitted, at least 90% of the student body must be transported to and from school by bus. Number of school buses advanced capped at 18. Traffic associated with the school must be equalized between the two entrances to the school.
So this thing about equalizing the entrances has been there all along. I'm not sure that, okay.
And if you'd like, Madam Chair, just so you know, for for your, if you'd like to see any under tab 11 of what we sent you the last time, I have, you know, two and a half page summary, a quick, quick read of each approval and what the conditions were. So it's not.
Got it. I thought I had seen that somewhere. Okay, got it. I just didn't remember. It was the last time. Okay.
Yes.
Alrighty, I just wanted to clarify that.
But it's
Go ahead. I think I interrupted you. So go ahead.
Oh, no, it's okay. And we're talking about noise. Yes. So the only way that the noise complaints or issues and those have, and I I mentioned this 2003 agreement to you because it did come out of the the summer camp operation, and that's, and there were several noise complaints that did happen during the summer, although they have have happened throughout the time that Habad has been there. And in tab 27, we include a log of all the police department complaints and actual responses that they've made to the property for noise. So certainly, Habad's very well aware of when there have been noise infractions and when they have risen to a level that would require someone to complain to the police, because right now they're the only ones to come out to enforce it. So these activities continue despite the conditions and in spite of the conditions. And, you know, they're here before you now. They knew they had to come to you, and this is a time when one would be on their best behavior. And and these experiences continue to occur. So it is it is important, as you think, to to what type of conditions is you were speaking to yesterday, and it supports our reason to continue opposing this because conditions have not been effective on this property for this particular user. And it is in stark contrast to the many decades of school use that have occurred here on this property, because it has been, the the community, our Rock Ridge, has been able to reasonably rely on its private agreements and on the zoning conditions with all prior tenants and has has not had the same level of aggression or disregard for them from any of its
But help me out, help me out with something. And I keep asking this question. The disregard for the conditions at times has been the Japanese school, and at times it has been Carmel. But we are combining that in the, you're combining all of that with Habad. And Habad has been there since 2021, September of 2020, I believe it is, correct?
The reason that it does extend is that there, yes, their their tenancy as a school has started in 2020. But they have been using the campus for camp purposes.
For camp purposes, but we're throwing the whole thing at them. And I get, I mean, I'm with you.
The way they do business and the type of neighbor they have been, and even in their discussions with us for on this specific issue since that safe March of this year, on just the preschool has been indicative of the way that they will continue to be a neighbor. But it is not just the the neighbor relations I'm identifying here. I'm also calling going through here with you, special permit standards. And I am having them overlap for the sake, really, the sake of trying to be efficient. But, you know, we went through them the last time, how the special permit standards were not not complied with. But the Planning and Zoning Commission's duty
But again, again, I'm trying to get to, I mean, I do you see what I, I think you see what I'm driving at, right? I'm trying to segregate. Habad is the applicant before us.
Yes.
What are the issues with Habad's performance? And what has Habad done? Because what happened before they came on to this doesn't speak to anything that would go forward. Now, you have a separate set of concerns that does overlap, which is changing the special permit conditions.
That's correct.
And you're concerned with changing them. And that, I've got, I I hear you on that. I just lost my spot on the special permit issues. You you laid out all of our special permit standards, and you put comments next to them.
Yes, and we updated that today because there were some comments in our last our September 28 version, which spoke to a failure to provide the master plan. And we, since that since that has been provided to some extent, we have removed that. But the I'll answer them in the reverse. I'll start with the special permit criteria. It is required that you find that this proposed use will meet each of these standards.
Yep.
Orderly growth. I don't think that that has been that has been answered. We have some master plan details that demonstrate an intensification that may adversely affect the neighborhood. There has been no discussion about orderly growth or what they see happening to the property, and that they want to be part of this community, which is commendable. And as I said, they're a wonderful part of this community. But this is a residential neighborhood, and we are being, you're introducing new uses to that. They are not, it is not one educational use to another. It is a new a new educational use, it's a preschool use, which impacts the traffic. It impacts the faculty parking. It impacts the area roadways. And there are inconclusive traffic engineering comments associated with that.
I believe someone on the commission, correct me if you remember, when we did Greenwich Academy, did we not consider the daycare part of their educational use? Does anybody remember? Remember, they trended the historic home that they did the HO on, and that's where the daycare is now?
Yeah, but see, that wasn't, that was on a separate site under a separate, under separate conditions. It wasn't actually part of the campus.
Okay, so that was Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Miss. Go ahead, Katie. Or somebody talk.
Well, no, I I ask, I I think, I think Nick's right. It was a separate location. But I think at one point we asked in our regs, do we consider preschool part of a school? And I asked that question, Katie.
Yeah, they, it was obviously two separate campuses, but that was a big part of the the question that we wanted them to address because they kept talking about how it was a feeder to their school, but really, it wasn't necessarily. They could have taken children from outside of the Greenwich Academy environment. So that was part of the question was, was it part of Greenwich Academy or not? Here, it's slightly different because it's it's very clear that that's it's one they wanted as one school, unless I'm misunderstanding something, but a little different than what Greenwich Academy was doing.
Were weren't these the children of faculty members that were
That was the point, not not in total. They they had said some of them are going to be, but they made it very clear. It could be other children from that had nothing to do with the school, and it would not necessarily move on to the next grade. They were not guaranteed a slot in first grade Greenwich Academy.
No, no, but wasn't it, was it characterized as daycare? I believe it was, wasn't it?
No, I think it was. Yes, it was. You're absolutely right. It was. Yes.
That's what I thought. I don't remember. I don't remember preschool or anything with the the word school in it. I remember daycare. But I that's my recollection.
Right, but the relationship that it had with with Greenwich Academy, whether or not they were, this children, as they aged, would be permitted to go to Greenwich Academy became an important distinction. And I think that's separate and apart from what what we're looking at here, because this is a preschool. It's not a daycare.
Mrs. Kaufman, can you can you expand on what you had said before about the preschool under a different license, and you had mentioned it right at the top?
Yes, I I'm not disputing that you can determine that a preschool is an educational use. There's certainly an educational component to it. But a school for kindergarten through ninth grade and And even, um, the upper, uh, high school grades is overseen. And the license, uh, is issued by the Department of Education, by the State Department of Education. All preschools, daycares are issued by the Office of Early Childhood, uh, under the, the Office of Early Childhood Development. It is a different, it is a completely different license. And, uh, you know, that's the license that you have on file that, uh, you know, was signed off for an administrative purpose. So it is, and, and it is a different use too, because when you speak to buses, which has always been a big part of the history of the, the zoning conditions here. Um, that in a way to minimize impact to this community, students had to be bussed. And a certain percentage of students had to be bussed. And just because this, the school, and this is something else you really need to consider. I don't think the applicant, their, their master plan side is that the, the applicant hasn't demonstrated to you what a full build out looks like. Because right now you are looking at this as a piecemeal because the Japanese school is winding down. It is smaller and the, there is not a full. Of capacity here at the school. So it's somewhat misleading and say, oh, it's not going to be a problem because such and such is going to leave. But then we see another bullet point which says, well, we might decide to lease, sublease space out to other uses in schools. So, you know, there's a lot going on here that's just not, uh, not being presented at a granular level for you to be able to make some of these determinations. So back to the point about the preschool is that preschool students arrive by car. Their parents have to bring them, um, unless there is some other type of van or carpooling, which has been recommended. But there is no significant information provided in your record that identifies how that's going to happen. How one is going to reasonably rely on that. And even if students are brought in by van or carpool at the. You know, the sign off by their parents, the agreement by their parents, um, that's done privately, but it would not preclude one from deciding to not use it. There's no way to enforce that. I know this because I also represent, I represented a preschool, um, and a daycare that wanted to implement the same thing. And the, the state said, that's great. And if the zoning commission wants to enforce it, the zoning commission can certainly enforce it. Will allow it provided that we have signatures from, you know, each and every parent. But, uh, all parents have to have access to children under the age of five at all times. It's not a public school or even a private school under the Department of Education. It is a completely different animal licensing, um, procedure. There are different people who could, the different state department. Um, so there's a lot more flexibility there than there is and there's very, very little way to enforce it. So I, I may say, yes, I'm gonna put my child on the bus or on the van every day to go to preschool. But if they cry when I put them in the van with a stranger or with a someone else. And that causes me stress, I'm gonna drive my kid to school every day. And. Unless someone in the neighborhood is watching it and seeing it's, how are you going to, how are you going to necessarily enforce that? Because by law they can't make you, my child, take a, I, a private van. It's not like school where there are public buses and it's a busing system and it's a, it's a just a much, it's a much harder condition to enforce. Has not been, has not been vetted at all. And we talked about that the last time, but I expected to see some type of. The beta report comes back with a very, very vague comment. It's like, oh yes, this seems, this condition now seems more consistent with what I've seen. But there's still been no, no information provided by the applicant about how it's been.
Uh, Rabbi Darren, uh, Mrs. Darren, can, I think, what are the ages, uh, proposed for the preschool children?
Ages eighteen months through four years old.
Okay, and then. Five at kindergarten. Great, thank you very much.
Uh, your second permit standard has to do with no adverse effect of storm drainage sewer disposal or other municipal facilities. Um, and November fourth, you received a Department of Public Works Sewer Division memorandum. That notice, uh, notes infrastructure deficiencies. Those were not discussed tonight. And I think it would be. Irresponsible to put a condition on that says, you know, prior to the, because this is a use, this isn't a new building, right? So when you have a new building that says no CO shall be issued until the comments of the DPW Sewer Commission are addressed. But with a used, it's not.
I'd like to just stop you for a sec because, um, I, I think we all went through this, this weekend. And what, the only thing I was, the only reason I brought you back to the special permit standards. Is because I was bringing you back to what is actually before us, which is the change to the original conditions of the approval. That's all that's before us and I wanted to narrow the corral a little bit to, that was before us. And that's why I was trying to dissuade you from bringing in violations from a previous. Owner. Um, or a previous operator, whichever way you want to put it, because those aren't relevant to what. Habad is gonna do going forward, but I want to focus it on, they are here to change those conditions. And you have raised the concerns about, um, very specifically regarding those conditions. Is where, for example, on the cars, on the increase in the cars, the intensification of the traffic. Uh, as regards special permit for us to consider. So I've got that part, um, but we don't have to walk through all the special permit.
Okay, well, I, you know, you, you did, you did ask me and I, I won't, I won't go through it ad nauseam. But that sewer, that sewage issue is, is important because again, there's something on the site that's not supporting. Uh, there's an illegal sewer connection and it's, you are now adding more students and potentially, or not more students, I should say. But you're adding a different type of use. Um, and as far as that, you know, it's, it's a public safety and health concern. And right now it doesn't meet that condition and that, that can't be dismissed. And that has to do with the site plan modification that's before you. And the special permit modification that's before you. So yes, while you are hearing, um, from the Habad that they want to have modifications to the conditions. That comes through you, through to you as a modif- procedurally, as a modification to a site plan and a special permit. So all of these standards apply even in the, in that minute, in that, I don't want to say it's minute, but in that very, very narrow scope. Material and adverse impacts to, to changing the type of educational uses that are on the site. We, we haven't heard, uh, we haven't heard from them on that. Just kind of going through it quickly because you do have it in writing. Again, the no adverse impacts to pedestrian circulation and neighborhood accessibility. Um, the fact that the. Equalization of traffic has not been. Acknowledged, uh, is also problematic. We've raised other safety and traffic congestion concerns. One of the. Standards is these, is that the use is in scale with the surrounding. The surrounding neighborhood. Again, this is, you're changing something on the site. It feels like a school because there are small children that are coming here and hopefully will be feeders to the school. But I can assure you that it, the operation for eighteen months to four years old is, um, is, is a very different experience. The. Number ten, uh, the use will not alter the neighborhood. This is a hundred year old association that has been party to a neighborhood agreement for decades. And we have a new tenant who, and potential new owner who should be party to that. And their, uh, uh, their landlord, uh, Carmel is a party to that. And there is a material change now that is not being respected. The only way to get their attention on this is to bring a lawsuit on the right of first refusal. But also, uh, to private, to private conditions. And some of those conditions overlap with your zoning conditions. And this again, is just representative of the disrespect for the procedure and the system that has been in place. And that has worked for many, many years, even when there is a problem between, you know, between some of these schools. In this association in the past, it happens often with neighbors. It has been resolvable with you and, and by private agreement and everyone has respected that and that has not, that has not happened. The, again, when you go through the site plan standards, which are also part of this. Just brings you back to neighborhood scale and context, water and DPW issues, environmental quality of the. Of the infrastructure. All of these things have not been talked about because the applicant wants you to think this is not a big deal. But these things are all, they're all significant. And their land use entitlements that may. Impact private agreements and impact the, uh, the quality control. From a zoning perspective that has existed for many, many years. And when we have, the preschool now is operating illegally by nature of the staff report. And I know we're here trying to, you're, you're trying to resolve it, but. Oh, it didn't need, it, it didn't need to come, you know, to come about this way. Um, and. This is not the type of application that I think this commission's in the business of approving. I think it's the irresponsible, disrespectful actions of the tenant and the applicant shouldn't be rewarded. With a may a culpa site plan and special permit application. If they are not demonstrating to you the full. Uh, the, the full compliance with your special permit standards. And, uh. It's imperative for you to consider all of the requests, the past behavior, the foreseeable consequences of approving. Uh, this application. Knowing, knowing what's coming down the pike. And we just asked that you equitably apply and enforce your prior zoning approvals. All of the conditions of those approvals, the building regulations. If failure to do so here is a violation of your duty, the trust of my clients, your taxpayers and constituents. And it just violates the trust that folks in Greenwich put in you and risks inviting future disregard of your zoning authority. By this applicant, which has been demonstrated time and time again.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to read through our materials and for listening to our position.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn, I, if nobody minds, I'm gonna turn to public comment because we've got ten people with their hands on. Patrick, would you kindly put on the timer? Cause, um, otherwise we're gonna be here until. A long time and I'm gonna start with. I'm waiting for Patrick. Well. If not, does anybody have a hand, a second hand who can do three minutes and call it?
Yes.
There you are. Oh, Patrick, you're ready. Okay, I didn't see you. Come on. The first speaker is John Cooper. And Mr. Cooper, uh, you may now speak. Um, hi, just so you know. We, you, we're going to be timing you for three minutes.
I'll take that long, I promise.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Cooper.
Am I supposed to put on video or no?
Uh, no, you're, just go ahead. I thought the timer was gonna block you.
No problem. I will speak and I have spoken before. Forty year resident of Rock Ridge on the Ridgeway. I can hit a nine iron from my driveway over Saint Bees Chapel and yet I'm not considered a proximate home. And yet Mariachi knows me from issues with the camp twenty years ago. And, and. The behavior was always push, push, push. Um, they had an advocate in David Messer who helped them greatly. And we approved this and we allowed that and then, oh, next year it's a pool. And you have to understand that this is a hundred year old. Association that was actually given. Taxing rights in nineteen twenty five by an act of the state. In eighteen eighty-three, Nathaniel Witherell divided this property, was the old Zachius Mead Farm. And he put covenants and stipulations on every new property. Existing houses were grandfathered and there are only three of them. So first things I learned when I, my wife and I bought our house, we could not put up anything in the front of our house. Rock Ridge was meant to be an open park-like community. And only once did we waive that. When Yvonne Lendle lived in Rock Ridge and he had five attack shepherds. We, not the Planning and Zoning Commission, we allowed him to fence his property. The day he sold it, that fence came down. It doesn't go with the owner. It goes with the land. And this is why I'm fascinated. These covenants go to both of the schools in Rock Ridge. There are thirty-nine individual houses. And there are two schools, one of which is like the mouse in the cupboard. We've never heard from it. Because they are respectful and they are appreciative of being part of this organization. And, uh, Margarita, I'm stunned because I don't remember anything that the Japanese Educational Institute ever did. To raise our ire, but there sure have been other situations. And what's actually bothering me is that we're not talking about what we're not talking about. Tom Hagney referred to and other things on the campus. Well, our understanding is that there are bar mitzvahs and bat mitzvahs and there will be religious ceremonies and they will be this and that. And, and where, where does it end? But I think that the issue here is the, the application. And again, it's from a tenant, not an owner, so that's against the covenants anyway. But, uh, the application. For more intense uses and, and. And ever expanding use is substantially out of character with the longstanding and stable surrounding properties. This neighborhood has, has existed. Long before any of us were around and I hope it will remain that way without encumbrances from a highly forced. Application that should never have been allowed in the first place. How they got a pass, someone ought to look into. I don't think it's fair and I don't think it's right. Thank you. That's all.
Um, thank you, Mr. Cooper. And before you go, I'll take up your last four seconds. Um, it is, it isn't that we weren't, we weren't saying that the conditions didn't run with the land. It was just the complaints have to be attached to the offender. Because a complaint that relates to somebody else shouldn't be raised regarding this, this applicant. That was all we were saying.
May I ask one more question?
Of course.
Okay.
Well, we'll punish you some other time for, for taking too much time. Go ahead.
That's fine. Has anyone from P and Z staff or even the, the, um, the P and Z board? Have they gone to Lincoln Avenue or the neighbors around Mason and asked about their experience? Because I've been told it's been horrendous. So.
Yeah, Mr. Cooper, I'm aware that there are complaints in that neighborhood, but again, we are strictly mandated. We're very much mandated to focus on what is in front of our noses. And what is in front of us is the application to change the conditions that apply to this property. And whether the, whether the applicant has done something somewhere else has to be kept outside of our minds.
I understand that. Can I suggest get a new traffic group? Because there is no access to the campus from the Ridgeway.
Yes, I, I. As, I'm aware of that. I remember, I remember that that was an issue. Okay, I'm gonna let someone else talk. Cause I used up more than your last four seconds. Thank you, sir. The next person is Vlada Epstein.
Yes, hi, um, my name is Vlada Epstein. I hope that you guys are all having a good night. Uh, I just wanted to say that my husband and I moved from, uh, the Upper West Side to Greenwich in May. And part of the reason is because of the, uh, uh, Habad. And the community that the Habad provides for the Jewish, uh, community within Greenwich. And my daughter has been, uh, attending, uh, the camp and the preschool and she loves it. And we love the community and Mariachi has just been so welcoming. And that is part of the reason why we have actually stayed in Greenwich and not moved back to Manhattan. Um, because of Mariachi and the Jewish community and the Habad.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren Evans. Our next speaker is Lauren Evans.
Hi, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks very much. This is Lauren's husband. First of all, thanks everyone for, for giving me a couple of minutes to, to speak here tonight. I'm here to voice my support on, on behalf of the Habad of Greenwich, both as a town resident, both as a resident of Lake Avenue and as somebody that sends my daughter to school there. I take her every morning. I pick her up every afternoon. I personally have not experienced any negative consequences regarding traffic or noise. Given the fact that I've been working from home on Lake Avenue, right down the street for the last year and a half, I drive by the Habad several times a day, every day. And again, have never experienced or noticed noise or traffic related issues as a result of the Habad's operations. My wife grew up in Greenwich. I'm newer to the community, but we couldn't be more excited that the Habad has, has, has chosen this location for their school. And we're excited that our, that our children are able to attend. It's a, it's a, it's a beautiful campus. It's very well maintained. And I would say a benefit to the, to the community and the surrounding neighbors as, as I'm one of the beneficiaries of the Habad as a neighbor. So again, just here to voice my support for the Habad of Greenwich.
Thank you very much.
Could we get your name, please, just for the record?
Madison Evans.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker is Laura, I'm sorry, Dennis Broida. Okay, so you're, oh, it's Denise. Okay, good. I thought I had another, another switch. Go ahead, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you so much for letting me speak. I'm also here to talk in favor of Habad of Greenwich.
We, we can't, we can't hear you. You're going to have to speak much closer to the microphone.
Can you hear me now better?
Perfect.
Yeah, sorry about that. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for letting me talk. I'm here to talk in favor of Habad of Greenwich. My family and I, both my children have moved from New York more than 10 years ago. Both my kids attended Habad of Greenwich, their school, and we're so happy and thrilled to be part of this wonderful community, everything the community has, have done for us. It only had a great impact in our family and in Greenwich community. I work in Habad right now. I can see that the Jewish community in Greenwich is growing. And, and it's growing because they have great communities like Habad of Greenwich who can give them great education. Both Rabbi Darren and Mariachi are amazing people and everyone in the community can see that. I don't see any problems with that. Also want to address that in terms of the noise or traffic, I work at Habad, I drive every morning. I don't see that being an issue. There's never noises and the traffic, it's not, it's, it's not a problem. People are very respectful and it, again, it had only had a great impact in my family and in the whole Greenwich community.
Thank you very much, ma'am. The next speaker is Michelle Guitte.
Can, can I be heard now?
Yes, you're good.
Okay, good. Thank you so much. Hello there, Michelle Guitte. I live at forty-seven Glenville Road in Greenwich. I've lived there for almost 40 years. We're one of the larger taxpayers within Rock Ridge. It's a beautiful organization. We know many, many, many of the people there. I don't know that we've ever really taken a vote on this topic. I wish we had. But I fear, I dread that some of what you're hearing of the opposition is from a smaller group that doesn't really represent the real diversity whom we are. Here's why I really like the idea of this school. I live next door to Eagle Hill. I've been, I've been there for 40 years. When they got there, they also started as a somewhat controversial group. Traffic has got bigger and bigger and bigger over time. But what's been beautiful about it is that the open school campus is almost like having our own park. We can walk there. We can take our dogs there. We can play soccer there when it isn't used for other purposes. They're really hospitable. They're friends, they're neighbors. And when we've gone a couple of times with my son who was doing some, he's at MIT now, he was doing some practice with drone research. We needed a place to practice with zones. We went to Habad School, somebody came along and said, hi, can we help you? This is private property. We said, oh, you're, we're, we are your neighbors. They said, oh, for heaven's sakes. Well, then of course, please use the school any way you want to. I think if it were to be taken over and put into private property, it would be much worse. People owning the property just don't want visitors. People that are operating schools really do want visitors. Then I've got one last point to make with you, to make, to make for you, which I, I hope you'll consider positive. I ran across a quote by Barbara, Barbara Tuchman a few years ago, who was once a famous historian living here. She won Pulitzer Prizes. She wrote popular history. But it was, I was curious because why was she so happy in Greenwich? I kind of thought back then that New York was an intellectual community, Cambridge's intellectual community. She wrote a little paper saying Greenwich in the 50s and 60s was a really diverse intellectual community. I look at Habad and I say to myself, gee, that's what we need more of. We're obviously a rich community. We're getting richer and richer every year. It's a financial center, of course. But another form of richness is intellectual diversity. And I really truly strongly believe that the more we can do to welcome diverse views, diverse schools, diverse ways of practicing different forms of life, the richer we, we are. Thank you so much for listening to these and I really liked the idea of Habad.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Guitte, that was, your comments were very interesting. Our next speaker is Vicki Morton.
Hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, this is a follow-up to other letters that I have sent in, but I just wanted to address the new condition, the new request that were added on November 5th. I'm a neighbor across the street from the main driveway at 270 Lake Avenue. I live at 271. So I wanted to address a few points. The first is that Shabbat, Shabbat is now requested 50 cars for faculty instead of 30 cars with the argument that they need this relief while the Japanese school is still on the campus. They have also stated that they plan to invite another school to rent the extra space when the Japanese school leaves in 2022. So is this increase that they are requesting permanent? And why do they need an increase when there have always been two schools operating on the campus? Or I shouldn't say always, but for the last 15 years. And this has not been an issue. Speaking of faculty cars, the applicant also states that the current conditions have the Japanese school using 30 vehicles. The Carmel staff is using 10 and the Habad is using 16. So that already adds up to 56 vehicles. I'm not sure why they're asking for 50 when there are already a number of vehicles exceeding that. And then as the school grows, I'm assuming that they're going to need more than 50 vehicles for all the faculty that will be there. So I, I'm not sure where the number 50 came from, but they're already exceeding that with their own, in their own application. With regards to student transportation, the cap on the students arriving by private vehicle is supposed to be 45 cars total, which is 10% of the 450 student cap. In the chart presented on the page three of their latest documents, it claims that there are already 47 private vehicles being used for the Shabbat students, which is over the cap. So what, and I know that they are saying they don't want there to be any cap on the students that are in the 18-month-old range through kindergarten. So my question to them would be, you know, right now that is 47 vehicles, but that could grow. There could end up being more students between the ages of 18 months and kindergarten. So basically they want those, that number completely uncapped. And then in addition, they want the, the 10% of the remainder. So they came up to 95 with that. It actually only adds up to 92. But I don't see how that number is even a hard number because it looks like it would, it would completely change based on how many students they have in those lower grades that are not part of the conditions. I also am wondering, what about the Japanese school? Are you saying that all 114 students come by bus? There's not any students being driven right now? I, I'm not sure that I believe that. And if you end up with another school renting the property, are you going to be able to enforce that on another school that 100% of their students have to arrive by bus? So in terms of looking at the proposal in front of us, they are looking for a 67% increase in the number of private vehicles traveling to and from the school each day. And I think that's on the low end. I think that that's actually going to go up. Am I out of time?
Yes, you are.
Oh, shoot. Well, I'm not finished. I guess I'll just submit it.
Thank you. That would be terrific if you did. We like that a lot because we like to read things.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angelique Bell.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. First, I just wanted, I'm an officer of the Rock Ridge Association and I, Mr. Guitte, lovely, lovely gentleman, learned gentleman. He has not been in attendance of a meeting in the last two years. So he, I don't know that he would know about a vote. It was, the vote for the Rock Ridge Association was, the board voted unanimously. So to move ahead with that lawsuit, if that's what he's referring to. But good evening, good evening. I think it's important to point out that 270 Lake Avenue has been a Hebrew school, a religious school for 15 years. It has also been a Japanese school, a Christian Science Day school, and a boarding school for girls. That Rock Ridge campus has a long history of diversity and we're proud of it. And any suggestion otherwise is not just misleading and hurtful. It's intended to intimidate and distract from the real issue at hand for the neighbor, which, for this neighborhood, which is this is a proposal for a community center in disguise. The daycare is just the first step in a plan to have the school turned into a 24/7 operation in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Habad is asking for seven daycare heads. Yet, once they start to name Academy, they say they're going to limit each grade to 30 students. Well, if that's the case, then they don't need 70 spaces for preschool because then they'll be turning away more than half of their students. If you pass the 70 child proposal, the applicant will do what they've done in the past. Operate illegally, over capacity, and then ask the town later to rubber stamp their operation. And how do I know this? Because it's happened before and it's happening now. The initial preschool number at Lincoln Street in 2017 was 16 students, 1/6. When they moved illegally to 270 Lake Avenue, they had 40 to 50 preschoolers, depending upon what day it was and who you asked. According to news reports, they're also looking for a teen center, a senior center, religious services, weekend celebrations, and pieta tears. So basically a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operation in a residential neighborhood. It's going to be a lot. But wait, okay, so maybe the town will have conditions for this commercial operation, right? Habad promises to have most of the people carpool. Habad promises not to use bullhorns outside or loud music on Sunday mornings, which is my sad. But the applicant has a track record of not respecting their neighbors or the conditions or the ordinances. Just ask the neighbors on Lincoln in years past, in Camp Ga, Camp Gon at Carmel this past summer. There are multiple complaints on file against Habad and police visits to back it up. Why don't they follow the rules? Because P and Z lets them get away with their bad behavior. There is zero enforcement. It's easy to make empty promises when you know there aren't any consequences. In fact, there's a petition with over 200 signatures asking P and Z to reconsider and let Habad continue the preschool, but at Lincoln Avenue where they've had it for years. Having a community center, any community center in the middle of our residential neighborhood will drastically change the nature of life on Lower Lake Avenue and by extension Greenwich. And I urge you to take that into consideration. Think about both of the bigger picture, the commercial residential neighborhoods and the smaller picture. Think community. This is where we live. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bell. The next speaker is Jim Drakos.
On mute. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're all set.
Oh, great. Following up on what Angelique just said. You know, I'm concerned that the contemplated use of the property in the future is moving away from educational use. I remember the discussions regarding the foundation house in the back country. As I recall, the initial plan was an artist's colony. Then it slowly became a colony for artists and others. Then it was a site for public interests. Then it was an outdoor venue for public interests. And now you can have weddings there and you can have large events for 100 to 250 people. So as a neighbor of the, of the Habad and a Rock Ridge resident, I hope that planning and zoning will ensure that a similar expansion of uses does not happen here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Drakos. Our next speaker is Arthur Bass.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd like to also do a screen share if I can. My name is Arthur Bass. I live at 25 the Ridgeway adjoining the Carmel property. I'd like to play two brief videos which represent the amplified electronic sound and music coming from Habad at the Carmel property this summer. The noise was so loud that I could clearly hear it inside my house with the window shut and the air conditioning on.
Pat, are you, hold on a second. Pat, are you able to do that? I'm sorry, I've just taken.
Well, it's going to be part of the Zoom recordings, which are part of the record. So I think.
I'd like this on the record, to be quite frank. That's why I want to play it.
All right, then you have, so Pat, I'm making him a panelist. And then, and okay, you still only have three minutes, sir. I'm just telling you because we still have more people and more business in front of us. If, okay, so.
Am I screen sharing now?
Pat, did you?
I'm confused, Madam Chair. Is he playing an audio file or is he looking to play something on, on, on the Zoom meeting?
I'm playing, I'm playing a video that I took from my terrace by my kitchen part of my house. Just to give some examples. I have numerous ones I could play.
I don't know. You can screen share that?
I'm going to try. Can you hear it?
No, cannot hear it.
You cannot hear it?
No.
Okay, well, the technology doesn't work. I won't screen share then.
Okay.
But I will say that the noise was so loud. I'd be, because I'm, we're all working from home and I'm trying to follow financial markets. I'm hearing the noise with the window shut, the air conditioning on numerous days. I mean, it, I, as I say, I've got it almost several days a week. I've, I've got it all summer. My concern is that this applicant has shown no regard for the rules and regulation as well as no concern that they are making these disturbances in a residential community of neighbors. I would add that Camp Gon is subject to an agreement with the Rock Ridge Association which prohibits electronic noise at the camp, obviously not observed. This agreement was put in place some time ago due to the excessive noise coming from the camp. With all due respect, I am very concerned that this applicant has conducted itself this way during the application process when one would think they'd be on the best behavior, which leads me to doubt that they will adhere to any rules or conditions that are laid out. As Jess noted, they're in breach of their contract with the Rock Ridge Association as to electronic noise at the camp. It would be ill-advised to reward repeated blatant violations by granting new approvals. It will just invite new additional violations. I will submit the videos to the committee. Actually, I think a number of these have already been submitted. And I thank you for your time and consideration. And I would echo the comments of, of previous speakers that Greenwich is blessed with the area around the Carmel property, Lower Lake Avenue, the Field Club and Rock Ridge. And it would be a shame to see these areas harmed by a, a bad actor. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker is David Chass.
Hello, Madam Chair. Thank you for having me this evening. I want to make a few small points and then one broader one. The first is there seems to be quite a discussion about there being daycare at Habad. My family has attended Habad, both of our boys. There's never been a daycare there, which is quite different than a preschool. And it certainly seems as though the discussion about the traffic for pickup and drop off is they're being held to a different standard. We live in the northeast part of town and rarely see backups of car, both at Sandwich School up on Sandwich Road, as well as Parkway School that spill out onto Lower Cross Road for people picking up and dropping off cars. I personally have been stuck on Lower Cross Road behind easily 15 to 20 cars trying to get into Parkway in the morning. So seems to be, we're looking to hold the Habad to a different standard with a much smaller So it seems to be, we're looking to hold the Habbat to a different standard with a much smaller class size than any of these other schools. So I don't quite understand that.
I can answer you. We are not, you've got, I'm gonna, just somebody look at how long I'm talking. We are not holding Habbat to a different standard. We are trying to make sure that we treat it the same and they are here before us asking to have conditions of a previous approval lifted or revised. And that's what they're asking for. We are not holding them to a different standard. They have something that they agreed, that that, that runs with that property to which, which was approved as an educational use, and they have come in to ask for that to be lifted. Nobody is holding them to it, and I'm very sensitive to that. But on the other hand, sir, we have to make sure that non-residential uses blend in harmoniously into residential neighborhoods. And it is always an uphill battle, sir. And we are not being unfair to anybody, but every time we do one, we do encounter issues that teach us how to approach the next one. Okay, sir, you can have back your time.
Thank you. And I should clarify, it's less the function of the commission holding them to a different standard than the, than the community members who are speaking in opposition to this application.
You can say that if you want.
Fair.
Okay.
The second point is, there seems to be this idea that it's going to alter, Habbat's presence at the Carmel property is going to alter the community, which, as the woman who just spoke from the Rock, from the Rock Ridge Association said, there has been the school there for 15 years, that any of the schools that have been there are at least four to five times the size of what Habbat is proposing right now. So the idea that they're going to suddenly alter the community is something that I have a hard time accepting. And that leads to the biggest point, which is this idea, I'm certainly not an attorney and I will leave the legal discussions to Mr. Hegney, but the term prior restraint just keeps coming to mind as I listen to everyone talking about what might happen in the future. I've had dozens of clients who have come before P&amp;Z in the last five to 10 years, and they come in for a specific application, whether it's they want to build a house, or a pool, or a guest house, whatever it happens to be. And that is what P&amp;Z looks at and that's what they rule on. It's not a function of, well, if we let you build a house, if we let you build a pool this year, what are you going to come, what might you come back to us with for next year? And how should that affect the current application? And there seems to be this idea of wanting a master plan because of what might happen in the future. That doesn't seem to me to what Habbat is asking for, a blanket ruling for the next 25 years of what they're able to do. They're coming with a very specific application, and that seems that that's all that should be considered.
You are correct, but in all fairness, we've asked the Greenwich High School to do the exact same thing. We do ask people to give us their master plan. I've taken five seconds from you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I would point out that Greenwich owns the property on Greenwich High School. Habbat does not own the Carmel property. So again, we're being, they're being asked to speak as though they are an owner, when they're at the present only a tenant. And it's why, for instance, I imagine you don't allow a prospective buyer of a residential property who's considering buying a property, come before P&amp;Z and say, if I buy this property, would you allow me to do X, Y, or Z? And yet, that's what seems to be asked of Habbat now.
Again, for the record, Mr. Chass, we ask other applicants to tell us what their long-range plans are, whether they're a tenant or an, they're the applicant before us, and we ask them what their long-range plans are because although only one item may be before us, we would like to think contextually and holistically about our decisions. So we do ask people, and Greenwich High School, in fact, does not own the Greenwich High School land. They are, they are, the Board of Ed, I believe, owns the land, or the town of Greenwich, and they're totally different legal entities. Just, I just want to make it clear for the record that we are not asking Habbat to do something that we don't ask other people. And we're being very cautious about that. We're aware that there is always that perception. Thank you, sir. I think I, once again, took a couple of seconds, but I think you were pretty close to finished, right?
But I think that'll cover it. Just seems to be a lot of questions about, as though they were the owner when they're not the owner at this point, whether it, whether it responds to.
Sir, they are, they are legally before us as an applicant. We don't ask whether they're the owner. They have an authorization to appear before us as an applicant, and we therefore ask them those questions. We do not get into the question of whether they're going to be the owner in 10 minutes or in 30 minutes. That is beyond our scope. What we have is a sign-off that authorizes them to come before us, and we are asking the questions that are within our mandate.
And that's actually quite common, as you know, Madam Chair. That happens all the time, Mr. Chass.
Okay, I'm, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is Wynne McDaniel. And I will savor the time of introducing herself because she is the chair. I believe she's still the chair of RTM District 7. So she is speaking, I believe, as an RTM member. Ms. McDaniel, if you would, go ahead.
Okay, hi, Margarita. Okay, hi, Margarita. Thank you. I am still the chair of District 7, RTM, but I am speaking as the private resident that lives nearby. I would like to just comment about the traffic. I frequently go out Carlton Road onto Lake Avenue to take a left, and it's almost impossible to take a left. The traffic, it's, Lake Avenue is a major thoroughfare, not just for schools, but for people just getting to downtown Greenwich. And I have a friend who lives even closer to Lake Avenue on Skylark, and she frequently goes down Perry Ridge, so she doesn't have to take a left on Lake Avenue. So the traffic is really very challenging and very difficult. And I can't imagine, you know, as we add more cars, that it's going to just aggravate the situation. On top of that, I would just encourage the applicant that they need to adhere to the approved permits and conditions. I've heard a lot of comments on the phone. I don't know anyone who's spoken on the phone, but just as an observer, I would say you have to adhere to these things. You have to listen to the neighbors. None of us live, you know, who are, who are the, on the commission and myself, live next to the school. So we need to listen to the neighbors. And I would just ask the commission to closely consider the concerns and issues that will come up by these neighbors as you go through this application process. And I will give you back some time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McDaniel. And congratulations on being re-elected.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. LaRoe, you can get rid of the clock. And then, Mr. Hegney, Ms. Kaufman has had her hand up for quite some time. Do you object to her speaking again?
I don't want her hand to get tired, Madam Chair, so.
Yeah, I'm so tired. The virtual thing is really exhausting. Go ahead. Mr. Biggis said that you may go ahead, Ms. Kaufman.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Hegney. I won't take up too much time. I, again, I just want to reiterate that there is no question that Habbat is a wonderful community member and resource to this community. I know we heard many people support the use, and the use is wonderful to have in Greenwich. It has existed in Greenwich for a long time, and there are many places where it can continue to exist. The question again to, that the commission has is, does the application meet your criteria? And that includes modifying conditions that change existing conditions in order for it to be appropriate for this site. We don't think that you have received that information to be able to make that determination. I know that you did, Ms. Morton, addressed comments with regard to traffic counts that we spoke to during the first meeting, and we do ask that you look at those more carefully. And those certainly are part of the continued use of this property. When combined with other intended uses, may have an unintended consequence. And, and certainly in the master plan you received, the intended use of the property is not just the upper school and then what I'll call the lower school, the pre-K and the preschool use. But, and, and the teachers, I did fail to mention when Mr. Macri asked me about the differences between the licensing. One of the reasons why they need all this extra parking is because licensing for a preschool, the 18 through, 18 through four-year-olds, is that it requires a higher student-to-teacher ratio. And the younger the child, the more number of staff it needs to be in attendance to, to monitor those children. And oftentimes, just based on the nature of a daycare day, is that it's a long day and sometimes has a lot of turnover as well. Sometimes someone's not there for the 12-hour day or the eight-hour day. You see people coming and going in shifts. That also adds to traffic. We talked about this once before, and there has been no information that's been provided about, about, about that at all. But also something for you to consider. In as, in this document, the proposed master plan document that was provided, it says that there are intended continued uses here that have not been properly permitted by you. Your special permit section allow educational and religious uses. And that's all in one line under the relevant section that we cited in our letter, that it has to come to you by special permit request. High holy days, fine. Religious ceremonies, fine, for bar mitzvahs. I was saying funny because it is fine, but it's part of this use. It's not part of the school, those two things, even though it is a religious school. Those two things are not usually, while you might learn about a high holy day at a religious school, or however, you know, or learn about religious ceremonies, you're not actually having those as well. And they certainly can have those there if you permit them to do it. They haven't asked you for permission to do that. They are operating those now by admission and haven't asked for that as a modification to this approval. Nor did they ever express to the Rock Ridge Association when addressed that they, that they intended to. Seems that they don't think that they have to. But by your spirit of your regulations, they do have to ask for that. Mr. Gutia talked about a smaller group. We did, we did send you an updated copy of, of the community petition, and that includes 204.
No, we saw that you had 204.
I just wanted to make sure that you.
No, I'm just, to be honest, to be honest, Ms. Kaufman, you're kind of going back over what you said in the beginning.
I just wanted to respond to some comments that I heard.
Jack, I would not, I would not shut you down if it weren't that, I'm very sure, I just, Katie, not, you've covered the ground.
Have your time.
And we are remarkably good listeners, even though some would doubt it. So we have heard your concerns.
I did receive, the last thing I just want to say is I know that some of the members of Rock Ridge had tried to put in a video, and we would like to submit this to staff tomorrow.
Yes, we understood that, that it's going to be submitted, and I, I got that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, Mr. Hegney, that's, we're going to send, Ms. Kaufman is, I think, has wrapped up now, so we will give you an opportunity to wrap up as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When, when we're talking about the, the special permit standards, some apply and some don't apply. The number one, not prevent or inhibit the orderly growth of the retail business development of the area. That doesn't apply. This is not a retail development area. One that does apply, and that Mr. Levy mentioned, which I think does come into play here because this has historically been used as, as a school campus, is preserve land structures or features having special historic cultural or architectural merit. I, I think that does come into play here. My client is looking to continue to use this as a private school, as it has been used for over 100 years, with a building for worship on it, as a chapel. And, and I think that is one of the special permit standards you, you need to think about and, and include in your, in your approval. I was thinking also, all of the public and private school buildings in town are all in residential neighborhoods. I was trying to think of one that was in a commercial area, and even I was thinking maybe St. Catherine's at the corner of Riverside Avenue in East Putnam, but that's actually in the R7 zone. And.
Ham Ave.
Ham Ave is in our 6 zone.
Oh, that is, okay, I always think of that as still being in the commercial. No, I understand, Mr. Hegney, I understand that. And I'm going to say again what I keep saying. Those succeed to the extent that we manage the interface between the residential and the non-residential use. And we get pushback when the schools and the religious institutions are not respectful of their surrounding neighbors, and it is not a unique issue in town. I gave the example earlier of a different school that has caused a lot of concern. And here I am looking again at what our approval conditioned, exactly what we're doing here, to figure out where we went wrong. So I understand that, and my answer to the community is always the New England traditional pattern of development is that schools are in residential neighborhoods and churches are in residential neighborhoods, and villages sprung up around these or built them right in the middle of the, of the residential village. We understand that. But we also understand that there are issues with the intensity of the use in a school. And as the schools grow, and it's a particular issue for the private schools as well as the high school. We don't have as many problems with the elementary schools, but we have them across the board. And we have to treat everybody equitably, but we have to be conscientious about the residents. And that's the first priority. And if you go back and you read the P O C D, because we are, you know, that is what guides our regulations. That's it. Okay, so having given you that one, go ahead.
Thank you. The other part I wanted to point out was that many of the churches and synagogues in, in town do have preschool programs. It's an important part of, of carrying out their mission as religious institutions in the community. And certainly, Habbat is, is looking to do that here. In terms of sewer comments, we're not looking to do any construction here at all. The building that the preschool is in uses the facility as it is. It needed a few upgrades in terms of life safety issues, well, last year, but there's nothing that needs to be done on the campus itself. And I know that the sewer department is always vigilant about being able to look where they can fix a problem that they see. And, and we would not have an issue working with them on that. Any of the new uses that we talked about and that were in the, the master plan outline, those all have to come back to the commission. And each time we'll have the same discussion we're having now, and there'll be the pluses and the minuses and the balancing that, Madam Chair, you were talking about that goes on with all the schools. That, that's, that's part of how you apply the special permit standards to each of the applications that come in. What, what you did with the foundation house up on Old.
Don't even, don't go there. That has also turned out to be somewhat problematic, so we're just going to move on. Okay, but you know, everywhere you approve this kind of use, you have to manage it very carefully. And you have, and I want to be clear about this because I don't think I was clear enough yesterday. There are conditions that run with this specific property that are different, I recognize, than maybe the XYZ property might have. You are asking that those be amended, and we have to consider those on a standalone basis. We do know how to use our special permit regulations, I hope by now. So I hope, we always can make mistakes. Go ahead.
No, you, you apply them very often with a equitable and solemnistic hand. The, the other thing I wanted to mention was that there have been a number of hearings with both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the ZBA over the years as part of the operation of the camp in the summer. Because every time that we were bringing the pool in, we had to have a hearing, and it afforded the neighborhood the opportunity to speak at that time. I do not recall there being really an issue when we brought those either before the ZBA or here. And really, the, the two issues that come up and that were mentioned again this evening are traffic and noise. And we did have a traffic report prepared, and. Uh and Bernie Adler is in attendance this evening. I can have him go over that with you.
No, what I'd like to do is.
For the comments that were made.
What I'd like to do, Mr. Mr. Hegney, Mr. Hegney, Mr. Hegney, what I'd like to do is to hold off on it. Let me just ask the commissioner if they're okay with this. My own sense is I'd like to hold off on talking about the traffic tonight. I want to go back and reread all the stuff we've received tonight. I want to think about it. I would like to leave this application open. And then I would like to hear Mr. Adler. How bad is our next agenda, Mr. LaRoe?
It's like asking is the sun coming up, Madam Chair? It's all equally, it it's all equal, so.
Okay, because I I'd like to give time to the traffic. Because again, I want to focus this on you are asking to lift these conditions. You are not asking for what it's gonna look like in 60 years. You're asking to lift these conditions and I want to have a very focused discussion on the traffic as it applies to that change in the conditions. I don't want to go beyond. I'm grateful for the master plan, but I we don't go beyond into that. It's good, it's informative for us, but we don't go beyond into that. But I want a little more time. We've been at this for quite some time now. Um and I I'd like to leave it open, have some time to chew on all this, what we've heard, what we've read. As you know, Ms. Kaufman has submitted an extensive amount of material. We did review it. I want to go back and reconsider it. Is that okay with you guys? I I don't normally insist on leaving something open like this, but I just, I feel like I need to chew.
Yeah, there's a lot to digest here, so.
And I would like to give, I would like to only address the traffic and the vehicles and Mr. Adler front state. You know, center stage the next time as quickly as we can accommodate and not, you know, have it be at three o'clock in the morning. Um and just do that and I I'm. Um I believe you need to give us an extension. Uh we have maximum extension available until the 6th of January. So we do need to move on this and make a decision. Um but that's where I am and if nobody objects, I'm not seeing any objections. So I'd like to do that. It's just a lot of thinking. Because I as you keep, everybody keeps pointing out, we have to be fair and equitable. I would also, if I could suggest, and I know we've suggested this before, please do confer with the neighbors. And I hear some people talking how very happy they are to have you in the community and that's fantastic. If you could make that like an 80 20 thing where you're really reaching out, which is, I know what. What you've said you're about Rabbi and Ms. Darren, I know that you believe in those. And the other thing is. To just be conscious that some of the stuff that's working for you. May be violating your condition, the conditions that were placed in the past and that just gets people frightened. About what could happen in the future. And so when they, when they and and I'm sorry to say, you know, if you happen to be operating somewhere else. The same things. It is your reputation that you're establishing. And I know I've said this to you. Um I said this to you way before you even consider doing this, just be cognizant. That all the values that you stand for are represented in how, you know, you treat the neighbors and how you. And I I've I I heard so many people speak in your favor. Go ahead, Rabbi Darren. I you look like you're dying to say something.
Yeah, I just had my virtual hand up there.
Yeah, I was getting tired, I know.
I just wanted to say specifically to that point that you're raising, Madam Chair. To be cognizant and sensitive sensitive to the neighbors. That's 100% what our goal here is to be. I need to point out that in that regard, we're at the moment in a very unique situation. Because we are a tenant and there's a landlord. The landlord is the neighbor. The landlord is the member of Rock Ridge Association. We haven't been quiet about our plans to hopefully acquire it. When we do, we're gonna be the neighbor and the communication will be that much easier, that much more direct. Carmel has done a fantastic job, but it's a difficult job for them to manage this three-way relationship, tenant, landlord, neighbor. Even as such, we've always been as open as we try to be. The noise, I want to point out, just the noise. That was due to the fact that we're in a pandemic and there was a lot of activity outside.
Outside, very good point.
I just want to conclude that.
There was not one other summer that there was a complaint of noise.
There you go, okay.
And it was the only reason why we did it. And we were hoping, we were very cognizant and Rabbi every day to keep it lower, to keep it lower. And we were hoping that the neighbors would understand.
And then the other thing is um back to Mr. Hegney that Ms. Kaufman said that there that there have been repeated efforts at outreach. That were not reciprocated. If you all could handle that in the next week or so and have a meeting of the minds, I think we've asked you before. We would always, we're always grateful when a community solves a problem internally.
No, happy to do that, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm gonna hold you to it, Mr. Hegney. She comes in and says you didn't answer her phone, you didn't return her phone call. I'mma hold you to it.
I'll I'll put her at the top of the list.
Okay, there you go. Okay, I'm sorry, Rabbi Darren, did I interrupt you or you?
Not, I just thought, I just wanted to uh finish close up by saying, you know, we've uh we've been in Greenwich for decades. Thank God, I've been blessed to raise our children here. And now, thank God, grandchildren in Greenwich. So, you know, we hope people know that we really. We care about this town because we're a real part of this town. We're committed to being a part of its fabric. And uh we want to do everything the right way and we hope that the commission grants this special permit. So we can continue to contribute to our community and with the education mission that we have on the site. And obviously, if you have uh any additional questions, if you need more details or information, um we'll provide it.
Okay, that's, I think we need to think you, you guys are on the right track in terms of how you're thinking. Um and hopefully, we're gonna have a better meeting the next time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much all and we'll see you as soon as we don't, you know, we yell at Patrick when he keeps us up too late. Thank you both. And thank you, Mr. Hegney. And thank you again, Ms. Kaufman. I'm sorry I cut you off, but I had, I we do.
Thank you for your time and I always never go when something's so close, so but I I appreciate it all the time tonight.
Thank you.
Speaking of Mr. Hegney, take care.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
So, um wait, I still got Mr. Hegney. Okay, so folks, could we please have a 15 minute break? Okay, great. Thank you.
Pat. Cosco School is in what zone?
I wasn't sure if it was in our six or not, but it might be.
Yeah, um, let's see if I can find it. Now that I'm.
Uh, I got the map open right here. Give me a second.
Okay, you've got to do the one that has all the, all the enlarged. It's easier if you go to the enlarged maps. Pat finally told me how to find that one. House cop. And then the other one is, um, isn't OG, isn't that still in the commercial zone and in OG?
No.
That's already in the residential zone. As soon as you get to the circle, it changes.
Yeah, and, and it also, um, it extends all the way over to West End and behind like CBS and everything. Those are all, that's, it's a, it's actually a very large property. Most of it's underwater though.
Yeah, I used to live behind it on Edgewater. In a previous life. So OG is definitely a residential, is all residential.
I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that OG.
North Myanis, I think he's right. Um, oh, Peter Levy was probably as hungry as I was. I can't eat dinner at four thirty. It's really a problem. I missed those seven o'clock meetings, but I, what are you gonna do? So Nick, you got the map?
I can't eight hour meetings.
What?
I can't do eight hour meetings. They don't.
But we're not gonna do eight hours. It's, it's gonna be less. We've only got two more applications tonight.
Just, it's not working very well for me.
But it's only, it's only been four.
Costco's in the R twelve.
Yep. Uh, I think it's our seven, actually.
Costco? No, twelve.
We'll look back here.
Or excuse me, central, uh, Costco's school.
Is our.
He's our seven.
Our seven. Costco's schools are seven.
Right.
That's interesting.
OG is, uh, twelve.
Yeah. And Jelaine Curtis is our six and, um, just.
Your, your lives are six.
Yep.
And Hamab is what?
Uh, I think our six as well. Uh, hold on, let me just double check.
Is everybody gonna remember this? We're gonna have a test.
Yes, our six.
I'm not paying any attention to what you will say. I'm taking copyist notes.
We're saying, we're, we're figuring out where all, what zones the schools are in.
I know, but that's a trivia game. I, I, I'm not gonna play.
Okay.
Just won't win the prize. That's all. No prizes.
There are only so many prizes you can win.
Okay, we are at the time. So Victoria, we shouldn't be too bad. Um, tonight, we did think, we did kinda know we were gonna run into a, a lot of, uh, public comment. Um, okay, is, do we have enough people here?
I'm not on this next one, so.
Okey dokey. So the next application is Albin, Goss, Low, Baralek, and Yaski. And if we have everybody on board. And we even have an attorney. And that application is Renamba Granite LLC for a zoning text amendment, uh, for the managed residential community overlay zone. And, um, unfortunately, you submitted some additional thoughts, uh, Mr. Cohen, that would need to be posted for us to consider them, uh, to, for us to act on them, but we could talk about them if you wanna go there. But you, if you wanna do an intro, you could do your intro.
Okay, I'll, I'll do my standard intro. Uh, I'm Bruce Cohen. I represent the applicant.
And welcome back from St. Bart's.
How did you know?
A little birdie, a little birdie planner told me.
Mr. Co, she's got spies everywhere.
There are no secrets anywhere. Uh, in any event, I do still, not withstanding, you know, my incredible lack of uh, I still do represent the applicant. And as you know, this, uh, application, although it, it had originally included, uh, a, a, uh, a site plan review, we've asked to limit, uh, the commission's review to simply the language of the proposed, uh, ALF or MRC regulation on the theory that, uh, if the commission is not in favor of the regulation, uh, in which, uh, the, uh, applicant is, uh, is seeking to, uh, 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 apply to, uh, the, uh, area that he purchased and, and developed a, uh, a assisted living facility, then there's no point in going any further. Um, I, in the past, I've introduced the subject to the commission. I've discussed the regulation, how it came to be. Uh, we've, uh, attempted to, uh, uh, address a number of the commission's comments along the way. Uh, and, um, uh, for the sake of brevity and knowing that the hour is getting late, I'm gonna limit my, uh, remark to, well, to anything the commission wants to talk about, but potentially to, uh, to the comments that were made or several of the comments that were made and points that were raised during yesterday's, uh, briefing. And, uh, I number those, uh, four. The first issue had to do with some language that the, uh, regulation as we submitted, um, uh, had in terms of the, the NFAR incentive arising from, uh, underground parking. In other words, designed to encourage underground parking for the purpose of, uh, maximizing outdoor space, outdoor planting areas, outdoor recreational opportunities. Uh, the commission, uh, I think it was, uh, the, the chair, uh, raised the subject of wording, uh, and, uh, I think it was a good point that was raised. Uh, we think that the issues, uh, that, uh, that were raised could be addressed by a, a change in the language. Um, Ms. Alvin, we, we submitted, uh, as you noted, uh, some language for the purpose of the commission's consideration. Um, and.
Might you go, might you go over it because the commission has not seen it? And since they couldn't see it, I only know that it's there.
I definitely will. And the, the purpose of, well, you know, there's no point, Pat, in showing this because, not that you'd rather see me, but, uh, it's gonna be tricky to.
Especially since you're not tan.
To see that language. Uh, the, the proposed language that we'd like the commission to consider, I, I think, uh, satisfactorily addresses, uh, the, uh, the chair's comment yesterday. And specifically now, in order to be entitled to the, the full amount of the, uh, bonus, if you will, for this, um, uh, underground parking, uh, incentive. You've got to do three things. First of all, you've got to, the, this bonus only will apply, uh, on sites requiring twenty-four or more parking spaces. So small sites, even though there'd be probably a lot less financial motivation to, to provide underground parking for a, a smaller project. Uh, this will only apply, uh, if, uh, if the project requires at least twenty-four, twenty-five parking spaces. Um, and, and if that is the case, then an FAR bonus of point oh seven five, point oh seven five by way of FAR will be, uh, may be authorized by the commission if at least fifty percent of the project's required parking is provided underground. And we use the phrase underground at the, at the chair's comment yesterday because of, uh, an attempt to match up, uh, a, an existing regulation that, uh, New Canaan has. And then the third point is that if you want the full amount of the FAR bonus, uh, in, in addition to providing for at least fifty percent underground, for every additional five percent of required parking constructed underground, the app that may be permitted, an additional point zero zero seven five of additional FAR. So that if you add all those together with the underlying point seven five, you could come up to a point nine FAR. In our case, we're, uh, in, in the case of the, uh, uh, site plan, which we would like someday to present to the commission, we're slightly below that, but pretty, pretty close. We've examined a couple of other projects where, uh, that may or not be, be the case. Uh, and, uh, but I do think that in terms of what I would consider kind of a technical issue in terms of how you calculate this, that this kind of language is, is adequate. And if it is desired to adopt this language in place of the, the current provision, uh, I, I do agree, Ms. Alvin, that, uh, that, th- this would have to be read noticed. Uh, and we would, uh, uh, assume that the matter would be left open for that purpose.
That to me sounds really good because it achieves the objective. It gets most of the parking. It, it just says to people, get your parking underground and you get the bonus. Then the next thing, um, I believe Nick raised this, was this issue of you're getting more height. And you're getting, and you, and you've got the FAR. Do you need, why the reduced setbacks? I believe that was Mr. McRice's question yesterday.
Yes. Yes, uh, to begin with, the, the provision in the regulation as we have proposed it, which is founded in, uh, in proposed section six, one fifty-one, I, three, uh, specifically. The commission may.
When you turn your head, we can't hear you anymore. Just so you know that. Can't hear you at all right now. Just mumbling. Okay, he's back. Okay.
How's that?
That's good.
Okay. Um, I'm looking at, I'm trying to talk, walking and chewing gum at the same time. In other words, it's, it's a, it's a provision that the commission may or may not choose to impose. In some cases, it would be beneficial, uh, because in some cases it may provide for, uh, the ability to have a greater open green space in a, uh, a portion of the property that is not uh, so public, uh, or not, does not impact public views. It's similar in some ways to, uh, a concept that the commission is, I think, familiar with under conservation zoning. Uh, the, the idea being it's discretionary to commission, it's site specific. It may be good in a particular instance. It may be bad. Incidentally, in connection with the application that we would like to make someday, uh, if, if the mission did as was uh, discussed yesterday, wish to increase it from twenty to thirty, i- it really wouldn't, uh, have an adverse impact uh, on our client's project. But we think that, uh, in some cases, it could be beneficial to allow the commission to, uh, to have, uh, a, a larger open space area on one side of it.
Oh, that's an interesting point. Um, you know what, uh, I don't know. My tendency right now is to leave the setbacks at their regulatory level and, and let, you've got enough room to do some really nice landscaping. And, and to leave it where it is and not reduce the setbacks, cuz it, it, I would. If in the future we see the need to change the setbacks, we might. But for now, I would say leave them at their original, um, leave them at the six, at what six two oh five is now. Um, I understand, I'm, I'm assuming you've also included. So Nick, are you good with that? Cuz I believe it was you who raised it.
Yeah, I think I, 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 understanding what, uh, Mr. Cohen is saying is that it's at our discretion based on case by case basis.
Um, it's always tricky when they do that, though.
Right. And I think actually that's, there's the devil in the detail. We've run into this before as the, you know, the commission may allow kind of thing, that, that language, you know, um, I think I have to think about that more, uh, and kind of put it into effect in terms of how I think that would work. I think it coincides with my other question I had, uh, Mr. Cohen, about the, um, the open space. Uh, and it's saying in, in the, in the, uh, amendment that, uh, the open space, uh, doesn't need to be contiguous. Did I read that wrong or?
No, it needs to be contiguous.
Okay, I think then I, I may have read it wrong. Let me soak it by.
I'm trying to dig it up as you.
Okay, so as I was reading it, the way I interpreted it was that it, uh, the outdoor recreational space to be provided at three hundred square feet per unit, but a lot less than two thousand in total. Additionally, fifty percent of said space shall be contiguous. Where's that other fifty percent? Does that need to be contiguous or can, what was the intent of that one?
Uh, well, let me, in, in our, in the case of, uh, an assisted living facility, typically there are uh, more than one area, there's more than one area of recreation, at least, uh, in the, in the, uh, project that, that we have in mind. There are two. One is, uh, that large, uh, triangular area that, yeah, I think you've seen, uh, renderings of the highly landscaped intended for, uh, assisted living, uh, residents. The other is a smaller memory garden that is specific, uh, specified and localized just for the, uh, memory residents. In other words, folks who, who can't really wander around in the outdoors.
Okay, so then now I think I'm understanding is that it, the open recreation space is one hundred percent on the property. But fifty percent of it can be, fifty percent of it could be separate from the other fifty by the building by something.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Exactly right.
Okay, and, okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'm, I'm, I think I'm good now. I can understand.
Uh, so I'm, the issue that was raised yesterday, I, I'm not sure whether or not you still have a concern about it. It was whether or not there should be a reference in the regulation as proposed to adhering to the, uh, state law. Uh, and I would.
What, what was your advice on that? I was curious to hear your opinion.
I, I think it should, and, but, uh, I think it should be done in the way that we're proposing, which is, uh, there are, there's really two areas that, uh, that we refer to, uh, state, uh, law. One is a, um, a definitional, uh, issue. In other words, we are, uh, we have defined three terms that must be guided by the state definition. And if the state definition changes, then we, our guidance has to be different. Your guidance should different, be different. One is activities of daily living. The second is assisted living services. And the third is, uh, managed, uh, residential community. Those three terms, which are integra, integral to this regulation are defined by state statute. Those are the definitional issue. are defined by state statute. Those are the definitional issues. The other one is, we have a provision in, in here that requires any assisted living facility or managed residential community offering assisted living services to be licensed under the state law. And I think you would want that, and I think that any resident would want that. So that, that is how, and, and those, the definitional and the licensure requirements are all within this.
You know, what made me sensitive to it is the issue of COVID may change the statutes because so many people died in assisted living facilities. And so I just somehow want to make a connection. And, and I went back and forth with Katie on it because we don't normally refer to state law in our regs. But in this case, I, I'm just, how do we ensure that we have that ongoing health and safety? It's in there and you know that no matter what happens, that's an ongoing compliance need. And maybe it's just for your licensing and so it doesn't matter.
I, I think that's true.
Okay, all right. I believe, I'm guessing that, and well, is it okay with you if, if Ms. Cronin speaks, Mr. Cohen?
My Ms. Cronin?
Yes, your Ms. Cronin.
You would like her to speak?
Yes, I put her up as a panelist. Would it be okay if she speaks?
Well, of course it is.
She raised her hand, so I've promoted her as a panelist. Madam Cronin.
You usually have to get her permission to let me speak, but that's.
Yeah, good. She's got those things straight.
Hello, just for the record, Michelle Cronin with already Cohen Russo and Nemroff. I just wanted to touch quickly on what you had said about the setbacks. It would be very difficult for our site to meet a fifty-foot front yard setback. We could do thirty feet for all the setbacks. We could even do fifty feet for a setback and thirty for the rest, which is more in line with what the current regulation is. But that would, right now, our front yard setback is about twenty-five feet. And so to make fifty, we'd have to essentially take twenty-five feet off the front of the building, which is pretty substantial.
Or limit yourselves on one of the other sides in terms of outdoor space for the residents. And that's.
The way that the building is right now, it's sort of pushed into, I want to say the back door, but it, it's sort of pushed to a side. So we have about twenty feet in the back, thirty feet on the side, forty feet on the side, twenty-five in the front, and then we have a substantial amount as the, as the property goes into that kind of point. That's where the, the majority of our open space is concentrated.
So any quick thoughts from someone on how we resolve that? I understand it. It does make.
It's trying to drop the stinky fish on the table. You just make the building smaller.
Well, the, the problem is, and I'm sure, you know, Bruce and I talked about this earlier, is that the current regulation doesn't work. That's why we're here today. And I think continuing to try to tie back to the current regulations is, it's difficult because it doesn't work. So when we keep trying to pull back to what doesn't work, you're, you're keep putting us in a situation that doesn't work. And that's, that's why we're here to create a new regulation that does work, which is what the P O C D has instructed us to do.
But we're also obsessive about setbacks and about green space. And we are giving you more height and more FAR. And so it's, if you're getting more height, why do you, and, and I guess the formula is you can't do the FAR without the setbacks.
Wouldn't it be a good idea, wouldn't it be a good idea to adopt something like the proposal that we originally made, but perhaps making, allowing the commission to have some flexibility for the purpose of doing exactly what, what we're talking about, which is providing more outdoor and more planted area, but limiting it to say the thirty feet that was discussed yesterday and as opposed to twenty feet.
In all brutal honesty, we don't do good with flexibility. Cause what happens, it's not our fault, because it's, you know, never the commission's fault. What happens is the applicant then comes in every single time and asks us for the very max that our flexibility could give. So it's useless. You can give us flexibility. You can say it may be this and it may be that. And the applicant goes, oh, home run. I just go for the, it is better to structure it and be very specific what can be done in what situation, or we might as well just give the max because.
I think actually if we, can we, if we take a look at that, that, just kind of, kind of play this out in, in real time. Applicant comes in, the text amendment, you know, is move forward. It says that you need to conform with the underlying, or you need to conform with the setbacks as is. And that at our, at the planning and zoning's discretion, it may increase. And at the, the pre-app, you know, we see what's going on and that, that's where we can actually start to really get into the detail of why is it, you know, what is the setback? Why is it like that? Is there a physical reason for that?
I would like to be more specific. I would like to have a formula. I'm sorry, it's just we've spent too many hours. You remember Victoria bailed us out on the, on the, on the, on the one. No, it's still in litigation. So, you know, you can go up to a point nine and there, look at how many of the, same thing with the old six one ten. You come in with a pre-app, we say, oh gosh, we don't really like that. The next thing we know, there we are again. So I would like a formula, whatever you guys can come up with that locks it in. You, if you provide X, you get this, that kind of thing. So it's clear cut. I don't care how it is done, as long as it gets you the same result. I don't have a problem. Right now, I don't have a problem with the point nine.
Ms. Alvin, are you saying that if we could come up with a way of determining that the additional?
Setback, yeah.
The additional setback on one side that provides the additional recreational area merits the, the reduction.
Katie, Katie can help you with that because it would be really good to finish it quickly so that you can come back. I already asked Patrick to put you on the next meeting. Since you have to re-notice, I don't know if that's too soon for you, but I feel like we've talked about this a lot and I wanted to not lose, I mean, I didn't, I wanted to get it, to get through this.
To, to that end, is there any suggestion or whatever the right word is to the applicant as to how to actually write that? I only say that because what ends up happening is they write something and then it gets, you know, then it really.
I'm just thinking out loud, if the total diameter, not the diameter, if the total, if the, if the, in, in sum, you made it up. If you give up ten feet on one side, can you get it back? Yep. Okay, go ahead. Ms. Cronin, you were gonna say.
I, I, I see what, what you're, what you're doing. And I can also draft it, it's similar to what Nick was saying, to say that you could do this, you, you could do this, but, you know, no less than thirty feet or on, like, give a minimum.
The less flexibility there, the more flexibility there is, the less predictable it is for an applicant and the more we get into a big mess.
You would like some formula. I think we could do that.
Predictability and Katie, Katie, Katie can guide you on it. If the sum, if the sum somehow, the setback, whatever works for you guys, but lay it out and structure it because, um, you know, that flexibility has not given us good results.
Well, that's what I had originally said, which is the front is fifty, the rest are thirty. What if you say you, you have to have one setback that's fifty and the rest are thirty?
Katie can work on it. Do the sum that works.
I think we can work that out, Michelle.
Do, do, do the sum that works, some sort of, you know, you make the fringe around the building and the fringe in total has to have the same area, whatever. That's a way of.
Mrs. Cohen, Mrs. Cohen had kind of hit on a good, good point there of front is one, sides are different, that kind of thing. I think actually biasing towards the front to make sure that, that, that setback is actually the largest that it can be because understanding we're going to give an increase in height, that kind of thing. That whole idea of ratio between the street and the top of the building is going to be the most critical thing. So if we can say, yes, that, that front yard setback is the largest and then we push outside the side of the back.
But it's that, you're saying the opposite of what they actually want to do with this property. And that's the problem. What we normally want to do with a property is the opposite of what they're proposing here. You're saying maximize your front setback. They're saying we would be better off having more setback in the back where we have usable green space.
In this case, in this case, yes, but in another case, that may not.
Might not. So that's why, rather than emphasize the front, let the commission, at least, we could do that, that kind of flexibility.
That could be flexible, yeah.
Yeah, we can handle that kind of flexibility.
I think we can work with Katie on that.
Just the band, the total area, the total, I'm just thinking, total square foot of area inside, of setback area is equal to what you would have if you, or something like that. And I know you don't want to refer to six two oh five, so then you have to figure out how you do it. Just, but don't give, don't, because people are just going to ignore the, the may go up to. That's never good.
Okay, we'll give it a shot.
Painful experience.
But the, the key thing, just correct me if I'm wrong, the key thing is wherever the reduction in the setback would be granted, would only be in the instance where you get the extra landscaping and whatnot.
Exactly. You get more somewhere else.
That would be tied into it, yes.
That's, that's why I'm going with total. I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, but just so Katie and I are on the same page because I can't talk, you know, I'm just getting it done now where the commission can hear it. Total square foot setback area is equivalent. Two. So just, I would do it to six two oh five. So if you would normally have one thousand square feet of land in the setback, you would still have a thousand square feet, but some of it is in the rear instead of the front.
Of course, you, you may not be able to equate a, a, a linear setback to a square footage determination.
If you're building, yeah, because.
You may have an odd shaped lot, but.
Right. You'll figure it out. Something that gets you pretty, pretty tied down. So there's not, it's not fuzzy. Fuzzy is not good.
So what we're proposing to do for the next and hopefully.
Last.
Is to submit a revise, a further revision of the M C, M R C overlays on that will contain language relating to the underground parking issue along the lines of what we've submitted or what we've shown you. And also a different approach to the, to the setback flexibility problem.
And I believe, I believe that you can do, Katie, just correct me if I'm wrong, but they could do what, you could do what you do when we're writing, we're reviewing regulations, you send it to us as a B C C and we individually answer you. So you could send us out their new draft and we could individually give you comments.
Great, great. Well, we've obviously been working with Katie and.
No, but it's just, we can't.
Continue to do that. Yep, I got it.
I got pushed back on wanting to have another meeting to finish this. I tried that idea too, but, yeah.
Let, let's hope we can move to a happy conclusion here because, as you know, we've worked a long time with, with the, the kind of help that you folks would normally not be getting when you're thinking about rezoning, people like, like Brad Perkins, who's got years and hundreds of these projects under his belt. And our own client who has a few years ago developed and now very successfully managed, manages a project very similar to what is being proposed in Scarsdale. So hopefully, you know, you're going to.
One more, one more thing. I just want to confirm that New Canaan language about the two feet and, and the not being able to see it. Not a huge deal in your lot, but we definitely want to encourage people to absolutely bury that parking if they're getting the bonus and that it not be visible, because that's really a good direction to move in.
We've added that, but you'll see it. Good, unless there's something else, I think we'll.
Just, just real quickly, Mr. Cohen. In the, in the draft, did, is there a language in the draft that specifically states that the current, a current license must be maintained at all times? If there, if there isn't, if there isn't, if you could actually take a look at that and add that, that would.
I believe, I believe that there is, but we would actually condition the site plan approval the same way.
Actually, actually, that's a very good point.
Wow, Nick, look at that.
It's, what it says is any development approved by the commission shall meet the definition of managed care, managed residential community and must be licensed by the Department of Public Health. So in other words, if a license lapses, they're, they've committed a zoning violation.
Right. What's, what section is that? I just want to double check. Or is that new?
That's H.
It's more than a zoning violation. It's actually, yeah, it's a zoning. Hopefully the state will come after you first.
Well, probably quicker than the zoning enforcement.
Well, we're going to ask for, we're going to ask for more staff.
Okay, that's what.
Okay, so the New Canaan language is in, you'll work out the setbacks. Katie will send us the new language individually so we can give her comments if we have any issues. So hopefully the next time we see you, we'll be in good shape. And I believe you need to give us an extension. Because you've given us an extension, but I don't know when it was to, because my, my copy, my agenda says that it's a must close on ten twenty-six. And then it says extension to close granted, but it doesn't say to when.
Let's see, maximum extension to close available the twenty-third.
Yeah, so if you, if you can just, you decide on a date, whatever.
We will.
Try to get you on the next agenda.
We'll send it in.
Alrighty. So we'll see you when we see you. Oh, wait, wait, we don't go away. Does anybody from the public have any comments? Thought you guys thought I was going to forget. Does anybody have any comments from the public? Nope, no comments from the public. Okay. That's good. We will then see you. Once again, we see you when we see you.
Thanks a lot.
It's always what goes with, with the hours is, well, no, I shouldn't say that. Okay, our next application is number ten, J S Land two L L C in Greenwich Runaway LLC for a final resub at thirty-five John Street to thirty-three John Street. And that I believe is Mr. Bristol. No, it's Mr. Tessie. That's right.
I am.
Okay, so we were fine with this, except we got tangled up in this thing with the easement and Mr. Look, Mr. Couture's comments. And if, do you want to jump in from there?
Yes, I do. Pat, I don't know. Well, we don't have to put the, you're ready to put the map up, but I want to talk about it first, so.
Okay.
Okay. I sent a few notes to Pat and to Marissa earlier today and actually yesterday. I'm not sure what Pat you shared with the commission members, if anything.
Everything that was sent to Marissa, Marissa and myself has been forwarded as far as I'm aware.
Okay, thank you. With respect to Tony Couture as only enforcement officer, bringing up a question as to whether the historical easement driveway to, through the western part of the, part of this property should be deemed a road. Is, is troubling, like a better word to begin with. Because this property, specifically thirty-three John Street, has been before this commission essentially three previous times and three previous applications. The first was back in, it was two thousand, about two thousand and ten, the original approval of the, of the house. And Mr. De Angel was the engineer and has been the engineer forever. And I checked with him and reviewed the map. And that driveway area was never excluded. Now, this is a rear lot, as you saw, as you know. And the accessway was, was excluded and is excluded to this periphery, to the boundary of the circle. As you know, we have to fit the configuration. In this case, it's a three hundred foot diameter circle there. So it's not only the accessway, but some part of the main lot. And that was it. And then in two thousand and eighteen, we had a lot line adjustment with a neighboring property and a former owner of the property, not the current owner. Um, with neigh, with neighboring property to the east. And there was also an application that year, once the property was transferred uh for a special uh exception before the commission for the um construction of a uh multi-car garage on the property. It also had a partial second floor. And the F A R calculations were all done on the same basis as the original with that driveway not being considered a road. Uh, our current client uh bought the property, was aware, because was concerned about what F A R rights he had left. And uh went through all the numbers and there, there's about four hundred and fifty square foot, um, I'm sorry, about nine hundred square feet left. Um, but wanted to do more because he's another car guy, if you will, that's why he bought the property, because of garages. Wanted to be able to uh build further garages on the property. And he bought it, you know, knowing, believing in the previous commissions of uh decisions of the commission. You know, you get to the point where, uh, as you can, as you know, F A R is kind of a, I don't know the right word, a sacred cow, but F A R is very much in everyone's mind when they're buying properties. So we I get more calls from brokers, probably, and I get free advice. Uh, well, I can't say more than anyone, I'm sure Tom Egney and Bruce gets the same thing, so does Chip. Okay, everyone is deeply concerned. So he bought the property on that basis and, and you know, um consistency in decision making of the commission, not only when it comes to a specific property, but just in general is very important, it's a hallmark. Um, and, and when it's specific to a certain property, going through three other applications. Tony had the ability to comment every time on every one of those. Never brought it up. Now he can, I'm not going to criticize him uh for not, maybe didn't see it, I don't know what happened. But now he brings up this issue, which is an interpretation issue on his part, how he, I listened yesterday to his commentary. How we individually decide, has decided, because it's, it's something that does require some subjectivity. Um, how, as to where he uh will come out in terms of his opinion, uh, on whether uh a driveway is a driveway or an easement or a road. And I listened to it and it's, it is, it is absolutely subjective. The party that has to make the final determination as a matter of law, and this has been before you before by myself and others, is not, is not the zoning enforcement office. Is the planning and zoning commission. That's in general, but in specific with three other applications. All decided, all decided on the same, same basis. The client now who's entered into a contract to buy additional land taking F A R into account, that was the whole reason he's buying land, and find out he lost, and I did the math, he loses about four hundred and fifty square feet. That he was bargaining for, agreeing to pay the prices, is, well, it's more than troubling, it's a real, real problem. And I certainly gave advice and so did Mr. De Angel to him about what his rights were and what he could build when he's undertaken this. And, and he's already started, I know, because Mr. De Angel is working with him, working with Mr. De Angel, an architect, and what he could build. Knowing the commission could deny the application. But please, I, I take a step back. Uh, your decisions are, are clear as a bell. I think they are consistent. We're not talking about a multi-party driveway here. We're talking about one neighbor to the, to the north who, who um is occupying a property at this way back in the forties, was split up from this front piece, was split from that. And that's where the reservation of the right comes from, as referenced in, in Tony's uh, Tony's survey. So that's where I come out on that. I think the commission really should be consistent in all of that. And I know you try, you strive to, you tried to be fair, and I listened to the previous application and all applications tonight. But you didn't have to waste a lot, that's the way.
Oh, shush. Katie.
But you were, you articulated balance, fairness, you know, what you looked to. So here is the, so thank you for putting up the map. So we're talking about, you know, the initial uh up to the edge of the circle there, that's already excluded. Under uh the definition, you know, the, the accessway is absolutely excluded. We're talking about from the uh end of the circle on the north, running to the property line of sixty of uh thirty nine uh John Street. That, and that's what, what he suggested to include, but it's even more bizarre. Because how do you go from a driveway, which is the accessway, to a road? A road, you know, at the very least, the idea of a road is it connects to another road. This connects to an accessway. Doesn't even connect to a road.
Katie, you had.
It's so clearly an, a, a, an easement in my mind that I, I don't know how he makes his interpretation, that you can go to the end of an accessway and all of a sudden it becomes a road.
Uh, Mr. Tessie, uh, you brought up easement. I think one of the, one of the befuddlements we had with this yesterday was that right now there, I guess there is an easement from nineteen forty nine on the property that allows access and egress from the, it was in thirty nine in the back there, the landlocked piece of property.
Correct.
Okay, now, uh, in a sense now, the parcel D D is being combined or uh is being spun off to what R. So this easement from nineteen forty nine will still be there, but would have to be redefined. Am I correct on that?
No, not at all. Not at all. There's no reason to redefine it. It's an easement.
It's an easement, but doesn't, doesn't the language?
First, understand, it's not an exclusive easement. It's an easement to both parties. Okay, it's an easement over the land. It's not exclusive to thirty nine. It's the right to go on the land on that driveway portion of it.
Okay, hold that point, hold that point.
Has full right and access to his own property.
Right, hold that point. It's, it's describing the land that they can use. Uh, that, that the, that they can use. What I was trying to get at is that the language from nineteen forty nine talks about a, a piece of property uh that's, that's one thing. We're looking at now, in front of us, is what would be a subdivision, re-subdivision, something like that. That now changes the shape and size and the definition or the description of this piece of property of one R.
Yes.
What I was trying to say is, does the nineteen forty nine language, the technical language need to be updated to reflect what's being asked here, the, you know, the, the addition of that?
No, no, it's an easement. There are many properties in Greenwich, and probably you've seen some applications, where, where there's a driveway easement. In fact, I know, because I worked, I worked on a couple of them, where a driveway easement for a neighbor happened to be through the middle of the property or through the corner of the property, not necessarily hugging, hugging the property line. So the fact that it now goes through the property is highly, is highly uh usual. You'll see easements all the time, granted, uh for ingress and ag, ingress and egress, that do not necessarily bound a property line. This just happened to do, now it won't. Now it'll be through the middle of the property or through a, you know, a portion of the property. So that's.
So two, two examples, Mr. Tessie, of that, um, that I think you were either involved in or have seen examples of, one was one twenty Oneida. Um, and the other was five seventy nine, um, what was it, Pat, Indian Field? I think it was, yeah. So in those instances, it would look quite similar in that the parcel that the driveway led to was landlocked outside of, uh, outside of the driveway area. However, it appeared, and this is a distinction I want Mr. Tessie to address, it appeared that in those two instances where the commission agreed that the land should be deducted, it was clear in the deed that it, and in the maps, whatever, that it was a right of way. It said those words in the deed. Mr. Tessie, on the nineteen forty nine deed um and the documentation thereafter, does tho, do those words appear anywhere? Or do the, or the words in easement, you know, for the purpose of ingress and egress?
It's very, well, it was very, it, it was a um regenage of the right, it was a granting of the right when a property was spun off to the rear lot. So the owner of the rear of thirty nine in, in thirty three uh sold thirty three, which was vacant at the time, I believe, or may have been an old house that got knocked down, and um retained the right. Uh, and it states, we submitted the uh, the D D, submitted the uh right of retained easement. Does not say exclusive, an easement through the property to access sixty nine, and that's what it, what it states.
Uh, page two ninety eight, uh, book three, four thirty six. Uh, you gave us uh that page and the page after that. The first sentence says, together with a right of way or easement over the present roadway, reading to, from John Street. Uh, it goes on, um.
And it describes it in legal terms, but that courses and distances.
So I'm confused.
Okay, then it goes on, it goes on, uh bargain sold and confirmed the center line of the right of way. It does say light right of way, beginning at a point.
Yeah.
So it's describing it as a right of way.
Well, it's describing an easement right of way. There, there, there are essentially terms that, that historically mean the same.
Except for the right of way, isn't right of way the field point circle case?
Uh, Phil, let me talk to you about.
Wait, wait, no, let me just, I, I'm sorry, Katie, could I just ask you?
I.
This would be my suggestion. If, if it's an easement, I really don't think it rises to the level of needing to be deducted based on the way the regulation reads. I hate to say it, but just the words right of way gives me a level of discomfort with this, and I think, I think this should be held open and given.
We can't, we, we need to close, I'm sorry.
Opportunity to speak to the law department, because this comes up with every one of these applications where the, where the deeds read right of way. And I, there's the two I looked at today, one twenty Oneida, five seventy nine, um, Indian Field, I've got another couple of examples. Um, it's, it's those words. I mean, I'm, I'm generally, I, I agree with the points you made, Mr. Tessie, that just because there's an area of driveway in, in practical terms that leads from point A to a landlocked lot that is clearly a legally non-conforming situation. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's a right of way that needs to be deducted. However, the words right of way appear in a deed.
Easement appears in the deed too, Katie. Easement, easement appears in the deed, and you've had three decisions where this never came up. And you, you, and all of a sudden, the commission now wants to tell a person who thought he had certain rights that they're gone because of, because of an interpretation that has to do with two words, easement and right of way both used.
So you're just skipping.
Let me make another point, and certainly, Mr. Um, now you can read it again. The first word that's used is easement. You have an easement and a right of way, okay? Now, those are two words, it specifically states easement. That's the lead word. So it's not like it doesn't exist, it's actually the lead grant there. And happens to also call it a right of way, because they didn't know the zoning regulations at the time made such a distinction, most probably, because they didn't.
Uh, Mr. Tessie, uh, the map that was provided, hold on a second.
Okay.
This is all on the map. This is one, uh, the one that you provided, uh, I guess it was today, I'm not too sure. They stated, uh, it was dated December eighteenth, uh, nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Shows a specific center line of eighteen foot ride, right of way. Map number two five oh one G L R. So it says it even on the map.
It's say it on the map, that's Mr. I'm filling out what the easement says.
So Mr. Tessie, the commission, no, Mr. Tessie, hold on. I've been trying to get a word in edgewise. The commission doesn't quote want to do anything. I, I take, I object to that statement of yours. The commission has set, has had a recommendation from their planner that we get counsel to look at this, and we just let counsel resolve it. That's the best thing to do. That gives us exactly what you were lauding us for. Consistency of decision making with the law, and we got no problem with that. And I think that's the, the best course. I wanted to try to get that before tonight, because I was struggling at the briefing and I'm struggling since, um, I don't think this is, Mr. McRice found the language that says right of way. I don't think this is ours to settle, because as you have pointed out, we should be consistent and we should think about precedent. So we will do that and we will talk to our counsel, and we will hold it open.
Well, I, I just think it.
I know, I know.
It's your decision, but, but I, I think ignoring the word right easement, running to right of way. Uh, when the document specifically leads with that it's an easement. And you have three decisions historically that owners should be relied upon. And it's your decision, it's, it's a subjective decision, it clearly has been, in every one of these decisions, subjective, that there is plenty of evidence here, including, including basic fairness to a property owner to be, to come up with the conclusion that this is not a road under anyone's definition. And pointing out, let me remind you again, it's a road that leads to, that leads to an accessway. So there's this one strip of land on this property that runs from the accessway, which is the legal accessway under section six one thirty one A of the, uh, uh, of the building zone regulations. Then you have a strip of land in the interim that gets to the rear. And so it's not like it even leads to a road, it leads to an accessway, legal accessway, so that thirty three is, it, so that thirty three is a conforming lot. And there's so much evidence here. And, and we are under a bit of a time gun, but, but, you know, you, you can make the decision. This is such a unique situation. And you've got the magic word easement in there, for some reason you hung up on that. Um, Mr. Wetmore is, you know, at the end of the day, he's going to tell you it's your, it's your decision.
Well, we need, we need to be.
But that's up to you.
So we've had situations where it says easement and right of way. This is always the thing, we've got a list of these things, so we do need to be consistent. But quick question for you, two questions. Are the, are the, are the lots in question all, even though they're in separate ownership by title? Are they actually the same, the same entity?
No, 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 that lot sixty nine, uh, thirty nine in, in thirty three were separated in the forties.
Okay, so they're, they're different families, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah, totally, totally.
And then the, the property, the, the, um, the one with the house on it. Um, can you please provide the timeline of when that lot was created with that?
It was created in a deed that was just referenced by me.
The nineteen forty nine one?
Yes.
And when was the house constructed?
Well, I, I don't know.
Well, because I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to the point of your argument, which is how.
The house was constructed in, I think it was two thousand and ten or eleven pursuant to a decision, which I referenced in my email earlier today of the planning and zoning commission.
Right, that's what I'm trying to ascertain, because you're making the point that, that that land area wasn't, wasn't deducted. So I want to know the timeline of when that decision was made. That's the only thing I'm asking.
It's in, it's in my, it, it's in.
Which is, I want to know if it's pre or post the field point road decision, in other words.
It's post the field point road decision.
So if you could provide that documentation, if you can just provide that documentation, that would be helpful.
Well, you have it. I, I, it's your decisions. I, I cite your actual decisions.
Okay.
There are three, there are three, there are three decisions, Katie. I, I mean, we, I didn't copy you on the email to Pat, but you've got all three of your own decisions.
Yeah.
The commission decisions, every one of them.
Yeah, I mean.
As far as field point roads concerned, what field point road, field point road is a road. I mean, a field point circle you're talking about. And Sandy was representing the association and I was representing uh the, the owner of the property. It had to do with the lot split uh of the lots, the association objected to it. Sandy may try to make the claim that the land area within the uh, within the roadway abducted, because I don't know if you know, but all the lots there in field point circle, the title runs to the middle of the road. Uh, the commission ruled, uh, in a zoning enforcement officer at the time, Jim Maloney, both ruled that your history is you did not make a deduction. And this went to trial court, I won at trial court. It went up to the uh appellate court. And the appellate court found by the reading of your definition of a lot that the area of, of, of that, of that road in front of the property uh that there is an easement for a road, a road uh should be deducted. Subsequent to that, what you did, just so you know, in response to that, response to that decision in two thousand and eight, I think it was two thousand um eight, that, that decision, I think it was two thousand and five. The commission decided to uh add a provision to its definition of floor area in uh the definition section, I think it's eight twenty three. And you added that last provision that's in there stating that land under, uh, I had to do a land underwater and other things, then added and the land within any, within any street, shout, street. Shall, street should be deducted from the, uh, uh, needs to be deducted. Uh, in fighting, in, in, uh, determining what the floor area would be for the lot. So that's, that's what you did. You actually basically were trying to codify that decision as the commission in two thousand eighteen. So you covered it in the F A R section. Um, that's why we're talking about not so much it to, in this case, the road. It's whether you deduct the area for it. Uh, whether you deduct that area and it talks about a street. My point is, it's not even a street. Who puts a street in the middle of a lot? It does, there's a street in the middle of a lot. It doesn't lead to a street. It leads to a right, it leads to an accessway. And there's so much evidence there that, you know, I don't know what in, what went into it. You know, how much thought was given, but how does it look like a street when it, when it leads to an accessway?
Okay, so we're not saying street. We're saying this issue with the right of way. Okay.
You, how to define it.
Okay. All we've said is that there's enough question about this and we, that we want to be consistent. And we want to make sure that the precedent, we're making sure we're making our decisions correctly and accurately. And we are going to talk to our counsel.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, you, you did, I know you're not going to change your decision tonight. I, I, I don't. It, it's a real problem for our client now under his contract, um, but you're going to do what you, you want to do. I think there's plenty of. I've given you four different reasons, five different reasons why this should not be considered a road. Um, you want to dismiss them all? Okay, well, I, I lose.
Well, your option is to agree that it's a right of way and then we'll just, you know, adjust the F A R. I mean, we could do that.
I, 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 I don't think.
But I don't think we can condition it because it's a subdivision. Sorry, sorry. It's a lot line change. We can't condition it. Okay.
Well.
I, I mean, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry for your client. I'm sorry this came up. Yeah.
Said, okay, tell you what, if you agree to something that, that we've never imposed and anybody else who owned the property. Uh, for whatever reason, because of some. Phrase right of way after it states easement. And you say, well, is it an easement or right of way? Well, it states easement. Well, right of way trumps easement. Okay? I don't know, we're playing, we're playing bridge.
I, I think, I think the thing if, is, if it's an easement, I do agree, Mr. Tessie, that, that I don't think that there's. A way that, that the zoning enforcement officer can just make that a road. I, I agree with you on that one. Um, I don't know.
Katie, that's the lead phrase. That, that's the lead word.
Yeah, hold on a second.
Easement in right of way.
Mr. Tessie, can you let Ms. DeLuca finish her sentence, please?
Of course she did finish.
Yeah, so, so that, that, that part I, I do agree. The, the, the thing that, the thing that is so frustrating. With this section of the regulations, frankly, is that every time we're up against one of these things, we have the same darn discussion. Because the regulation reads right of way and then you see those words in these deeds and every time we have to go through this. Um, so I think, I, I think where we are right now is that, um, I, I think there's an agreement. That if it, if it's considered an easement, then, then there's, there's not really an ability that you can't make that into a road somehow. Having said that, um, I, I think one thing we need to address is if it, if. And, and conversely, I don't think just because it, it, it approaches a landlocked parcel, that even makes it a road. It's the language of the deed that's of concern and that I think we don't want.
Well, there, there, there's the language. The lead word is easement. That's the lead word.
The main word is not determinative. If it says easement and right of way. If it said easement or right of way, then it would be there.
So, all right, so, so why do you lean, why, why would you lean in favor of right of way?
Because it says right of way more times in the deed than it says, than it says.
The granting, that just refers back in the description. It's a granting clause. You can talk to Mr.
Tessie, to your point.
Mr. Wetmore, it's the granting clause.
I'm, I'm just, I want to talk to the attorney. I want to get an opinion. I feel very badly for your client. We will do everything we can to, to move it along quickly and to clarify it, clarify it and have good precedent.
Is there anything we can do so that if, if the town attorney does say it's an easement, that it can be handled administratively at that point? So we don't have to wait till the next meeting?
Subdivision is very difficult.
No, simply because it's a, it's a revision of lines and there, there's, um, a landmark case from Greenwich actually that has noted. That the commission's the only one who can make the determination as to whether something's a subdivision or re-subdivision. You can't, you can't, uh, delegate that to staff.
And it's a really complicated.
Determination that it's, it's neither a subdivision or a, uh.
Then we've closed it, then we've.
That's not a subdivision or re-subdivision, uh, if the town attorney says it.
Can't condition, you can't condition, um, a lot line review.
I, I appreciate, I, I appreciate what you're saying.
I mean, she's trying to help you. We're trying to help you. We feel badly.
I, I appreciate it, but I also, I also do agree. I don't think you can do what you're suggesting.
I think actually, uh, getting back to the subdivision issue, it, it doesn't seem other than the issue of this. Right of way easement, whatever you want to call it. There are no issues with this. So if we get quick determination as to, uh, council's, uh, recommendations. We probably could dispense with this quickly, uh, at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay. We just added four things to the next meeting and Victoria's going to yell at me.
Well, you know, you shouldn't.
She's the one who filed the complaint about eight hours tonight and we're only on five right now, but still, and.
Well, it doesn't look like there's going to be much discussion on it. You're going to come back, say, we talked to Mr. Wetmore and here's our decision.
Yeah, okay.
And I can talk to her until I'm blue in my face and you're not going to change. So. It's not going to take too long, but hopefully, Mr. Wetmore will, will be giving all the true facts here. And, well, I, you know, understand.
We tried very hard not to lie to Mr. Wetmore.
No, no, I, I, I didn't say that right, that, that he can understand everything. It was poorly phrased.
And we, and our experience is that he does understand most things we tell him. Just keep digging, Mr. Tessie, keep digging.
No, no.
All right. Okay, so, um, can we say goodbye to you now? Let me see if we have any public comment. I don't think so because I've been looking at who's still here. And mostly, um, okay, so we have no public comment and, um, we will leave this open, Mr. Tessie, and we'll see you in the near term.
Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Goodbye.
I, I've got to get to the point where, when I say we're going to leave this item open. Where people stop talking when we say that. I just, you know, goes on and on. Okay, so quickly, I think we've lost Bob Barilak. Bob? Um, hold on a second. I, did I remove him from the meeting or something? When I got rid of it? Um. Hold on, I'm looking, I'm looking for his phone number.
Do we need the court reporter still or are we moving to, for the next?
No, we're about to. I'm sorry. We're, um, we're ending the public hearing. So, Mr. Court Reporter.
Yes, yes, uh, I'm finished. Thank you.
Mr. Basili, it's always, wait, wait, Mr. Basili, you got to turn on your camera so we can see you at least.
Um, I have no camera to turn on.
We're like, what happened to Bob?
They didn't give me a camera, you know, that's a budget restriction.
Yeah, okay, we're going to go real fast. We're just going to do the calendar. Okay, bye.
All right, thank you.
All right, and we have, we have everybody else. Okay, so real fast, Bob is signing back in. Goodbye, Mr. Basili. I mean, you're not showing us your face, right?
I can't. Bye-bye.
Bye. Oh, he's got a, it's like the guy earlier today who said he had a bad sweater on. All right, and we should be getting Barilak in a minute. Um, Patrick, while we're talking about the trust. Be, I mean, be ready to share the calendar, okay? Bob's on his way in. Okay, he can hear us. So just very quickly, everybody. Um, we, the B O S, the Board of Selectmen met today. Uh, this is on the next item, the discussion item. I'm going to talk super fast. It's twelve A. Uh, the Board of Selectmen met today. They, the, they had no comments on the Declaration of Trust. Uh, we told them we had some little tiny cleanup items we're going to do on the declaration and that we will be back to them once we have P and Z sign off. So it will be on our agenda. No surprise here, folks, for the next meeting. So please, you know, be, be prepared. It's, we're already adding to it. For the next meeting, it's going to be on our agenda. We'll go back to the Board of Selectmen after that. And then we go to the R T M. Our deadline for the R T M submission is December twenty-third. Because we have to put it in within ninety days of the R T M having approved the original trust ordinance. The only concern that the B O S raised is this issue of how we're going to handle. And they put it really diplomatically, but basically to make sure that, that our process is transparent. That what they asked for is that we train the board of trustees on an ongoing basis. On how to handle their fiduciary responsibilities as trustees. When I, when I later asked what that meant. It was code for make sure that everything you do is of the highest integrity. Um, and it's also a little bit where the line is between P and Z and the trust. Um, and.
Does that mean you just have a transcript whenever you need or something like?
Oh, no, we're always going to have that. It's, it's an, it's a public agency. All the F O I rules apply to the trust meetings. Every step of the way, it's just, everything is recorded, the whole thing. This is just also, you know, what is, you know, how do you handle conflicts, ex parte communication, predetermination? All of those things that they just want to make sure that people understand, that they don't bring any special.
That's all built into the, the lineage of the trust, correct, isn't it?
I'll be honest with you. It's, a lot of it is built in and a lot of it is already built into what, what rules. Um, how land use agencies behave and how anybody who works as a volunteer in the town behaves.
I'm talking about actually the, the, not us, but I'm talking about actually the trusts.
No.
Trustees and all that kind of stuff. Is it built into that?
Say the stuff about, no, you can't talk about an application outside of a publicly noticed meeting.
Okay.
Okay, it doesn't say that stuff in the trust ordinance because that's just, you know, we know that stuff and their point was just, we should be trained. Uh, and all that. So that's not a big deal. Um, my answer to them was, by the way, and just as a reminder. There is now a state law requiring ongoing training for commissioners, for zoning commissioners and planning commissioners. So, you know, consistent with that, okay, sure, we'll have, and we'll do F O I and we'll do all that. Um, and so I think we're good on that. They didn't have any other comments. So with that, um, we're going to make some tiny edits and then we'll go, keep going through the approval process. We are hoping Bob and Katie are working on getting us some of the American Rescue Plan Act money. And we're hoping that's going to happen. Fingers crossed. Um, there are objections in town. To the trust getting money.
From, from Rescue Plan.
Yes.
Yes.
Because it's depriving other, uh.
No, it's earmarked for affordable. It's money that's earmarked for affordable. The objection is, why don't we give it direct to the housing authority? And there are several reasons and Bob can detail them, um, sometime when we're, when we're not trying to finish. But one of the issues is the housing authority actually likes the idea of having the trust give it money. Because, and having it funnel through the trust because it makes it easier for them to get financing because it's credibility that it builds.
Yeah, legit, it lends legitimacy to their efforts.
It sure does.
So that's one big reason. There's several other ones. The housing authority may not have the capacity. Ha ha, if we were loaded with money. They may not have a project in the pipeline and the ARPA money has to be used by twelve twenty-four. It has to be committed by twelve twenty-four. And we just got a big thing on that from Westcog today, which Bob says he's framing, so he.
It's got to be spent or it's got to be committed to a project.
Committed.
And there are, there are, there are expended due deadlines too, but, um. There's, there's, there's really no doubt in my mind that, given the, the dollar volume we're talking about of ARPA funds that could come to affordable housing. And given the number of applications that we're seeing, uh, that, that we could commit that money and we could do it tomorrow. I mean, I'm not exaggerating too much.
And I said that to somebody on the B E T today. They said, well, you know, you do understand you have to commit. And we said, we got enough projects in the pipeline that we could commit exactly what Bob just said tomorrow.
How much money are you looking at? Well, how much do you think, what are we asking for?
ARPA, we're going to ask for one point eight is the suggestion. It's not huge. But we're hoping for more and we're hoping that the second part of Biden's plan will have more affordable housing money. The first part doesn't really, from what I've been able to tell, reading today. Um, okay, so now the calendar for next year, unless Bob wanted to add something else?
No, go for it. You, you did.
Okay, calendar.
So what are we supposed to object?
Um, well, you know, I'm just always come.
Are we, are we just, are we have to vote on this?
Yes, we do.
Great. Motion to approve meeting two twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two meeting schedule as proposed.
Have a second. Uh, Mr. Somebody who's, it was a male voice that I know.
Lo.
Lo has seconded. Okay, um, we can just do a, a chorus vote, um, all in favor. Aye, okay.
And we have, we have the rooms, like in case we can't do it on Zoom, those rooms are booked.
Well, don't forget, guys, we got the questionnaire. We're lobbying hard to keep it. April of next year, they may make Zooms illegal unless, um, it's got to be the Freedom of Information Commission has to change. And so Greenwich won't have a planning and zoning commission next.
I was going to say, you might have recruiting effort, uh, beginning now.
So, I mean, I know.
People, but I don't like you people that are that close.
The Board of Selectmen is doing a hybrid meeting in town hall and it really wasn't bad at all. We were on Zoom and they were there.
So we'd have to be there and everybody else can be at home.
No, Katie and Pat, no, just kidding. I was just a fed up.
Who, who was we in this case?
No, no, it was, yeah, right. We K wasabi. Um, so there you go. So, um. We're going to hang on to it as long as we legally can. Okay, now you want to do the A R C?
Don't forget November sixteenth at one is our, um, uh, training day with headache.
Oh, yeah.
That's in person, right?
No, it's Zoom.
It's Zoom, Nick, but I, I don't have it in my calendar. Did you send us?
I know, I'm just realizing that now. I'm going to send everybody.
Because I thought I asked you about it today and you said we hadn't scheduled it yet.
Yeah, we did schedule. That was a date that worked for everybody's, but if, but if everyone, um, Margaret, if you can send me a Zoom for it.
Oh, yeah.
I, I've got it in my calendar, but just as a.
Yeah, yeah, I do too. I do too. I have it.
One o'clock on the sixteenth?
Yes.
And I've got it, I've got it for an hour and a half. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Yeah, don't ask any questions. You'll be all set.
Do we still have that one on the seventeenth as well with Stonington?
You don't have to come to Stonington if you don't want to. Um, we're going to talk to Stonington. The first reason Bob outreach to Stonington for us because we were interested in what they were doing. Their tax abatement for affordable housing. Then we started talking about the coastal area regulations. And we'd love to talk to Stonington about that. And we'd also like to enlist Stonington to be active helping us if Hartford has a bad zoning initiative this year. So you guys don't have to come. Bob will be attending. Uh, Lauren Raven will be attending. I believe one of the other select persons will attend. It's their first selectman. And a couple of people from P and Z and their finance board. I actually didn't ask anyone for our, from our finance board, Bob. I figured you could do both.
Yeah, that's all right.
If they're going to discuss, Kim, I'd like to be there just to hear.
Yeah, I mean, and then when, we've just raised it with them. All I'm going to say to them is, hey, Fairfield County. The towns in Westcog are starting to talk about. Cam and having tighter cam regulations. Do you want to come and play with us in our sandbox, so to speak? And work, how concerned are you about coastal flooding right now? And do you want to work with us more on it? Because Darien and Westport and we would like to work together. We're going to reach out to Stanford and Norwalk. And Fairfield. Fairfield's not in Westcog, but we want to reach out to them and we want to look at what, so the, the conversation with Stonyton is, hey, you guys want to. You want to partner up with little Fairfield County?
Again, the, the, the meeting on the sixteenth is what?
That's the F O I lawsuit that was filed against us that we mostly won. Except for how we notice our executive sessions and as punishment for not saying what we're discussing in an executive session. We have to do F O I training.
So it's F O I training, basically.
Thank you.
But Margaret.
See.
Now, now, what, what I can, I can, um, one of the alternates could take our place, right? That's a joke.
No, that's a joke.
There was like, that was like a dead silence. No one knew what to say or do. I was like.
Everybody's like, you know, sometimes he's just really, I wonder if he's just not being funny.
It was funny. Most of the time it was funny.
He's just checking to make sure everyone's still awake.
That's, that's what it is. I think about, long about ten o'clock, my sense of humor gets adult too.
Yes. So should we get to A R C?
Okay, A R C. Now they're going to vote on this as well, right?
They've already done.
They did. I talked to Marissa about this. They're all set with this. So we just pull the trigger and make them do it.
Okay. All right.
Motion, motion to approve A R C meeting schedule for coming to your twenty twenty-two.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I didn't hear anybody say nay, so we're good. Okay. So there we are. I will do the Zoom right now for the, wait, oh, I know what, Katie. I thought Tom Hennick was going to set up the Zoom. That's why I didn't do it.
Oh, I don't remember that.
No, I just, I always thought, you know, they now have control of the horizontal and the vertical. Okay. I'll just invite Tom Hennick. It's fine.
Okay.
I'll just, I've got his email. I'll just invite. I like him lots. He's a really good dude.
A great dude, yeah. Okay, cool.
All righty. Okay, everybody. So you don't have to come to Stonington. We'll let you know how it goes. You know, it's just this constant getting. And we're trying to get the select people to talk to each other because it's even more valuable.
We kind of feel like we're the select people.
Yeah, I know. We kind of do, but you know, the rest of the town doesn't see it that way. We're the special people.
There you go.
We're just not select. Okay, now Nick is.
Who you ask about that though.
All right. And then we're good. Are we done for the week? We done for the week?
I am because I, I'm.
I'll stick for myself.
I'm out of here.
I'm going to send you a request for executive session for after Thanksgiving on some pending lawsuit. I'll send it, send another request. It'll be for after Thanksgiving.
Is this a, a lawsuit with which we are already familiar or is this?
I know it's news. It's not one that we've really, that we've sat and discussed yet. So it's a brand new one, more fun.
Boy.
But just make sure you post it correctly. No, that's my, okay. And Bob, I am seeing you, I guess tomorrow because we're going to, we're going to clean up the declaration of trust.
Yeah, but we have that on, I think we've got Alman in there. We're going to have.
Yep, we are. And it's been posted if anybody has insomnia.
And that should be easy.
All right. Okay, everybody. Thanks for all the hard work.
All right, guys.
Bye.